All right, Dave, we ready? Go ahead and get started. Or are we waiting for TV land? All right, welcome everybody tonight to our Spanish Fork Planning Commission meeting. I've asked Commissioner Warnock if she would lead us in the pledge tonight.
All right, will everyone stand and join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, want to excuse Commissioner Mitchell, who couldn't be with us tonight. And we want to welcome Jesse Carden, our newest planning commissioner, attending his first meeting with us tonight, so we're glad to have him join us up here. All right, looking at the agenda, first item we have are the minutes from February 3rd. Has everybody had a chance to review those? And if so, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the February 3rd, 2021.
Yeah, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next item is a public hearing for a zone change. We're looking at the Shriver Law Office. Dave or Brandon?
I'll take this one. Hope this is ready to go. This proposal is a zone change, but it's a little bit distinct from an actual map amendment of the type that we're sometimes used to seeing. This request would result in the approval of a zoning overlay that gives the city some ability to waive or to modify certain zoning requirements. We call it the development enhancement overlay. It's been used now about half a dozen times. I think all but one time it's probably been for the best. I think we've had one less than great experience with it so far. And in this case, let me mention this, for the subject property, which is located really just about one physical block to the south of us, the middle of the 100 block on Main Street, on the west side of Main Street, just south of the Mexican restaurant that's there. And I guess south of that and their residential use that's there as well. It's a home, which I understand has been adapted to serve as an office use. I don't believe it's actually been put to that use yet. Some of you on the commission will remember that just a few months ago, a different applicant approached the city about the same thing.
And weren't willing to adjust the parking.
And ultimately opted to not add additional parking behind the home, let's say, in the backyard to meet the city's requirement relative to the number of parking spaces that are required for the proposed use. Which is the biggest difference between the proposal that's before you tonight and what was reviewed at that point in time. With this proposal, the applicant is indeed proposing to build a contemporary parking lot that meets the city's standards relative to providing for storm drainage and different things like that in the back of the home. That would be accessed still, like was proposed earlier, with an existing driveway on the north side of the home. I'll talk more about that for just a minute. But in short, particularly with the applicant being willing to construct that parking in the back, which would result, for example, in the removal of a garage that's there now and that sort of a thing, we as staff feel very comfortable with this proposal. In fact, let's stop on that for just a second, Mike. And I'll speak to some things that maybe are subjective, just with my opinion, but I think it would be a shame for the look of this property to change, just because the use changes, at least what you see from Main Street, in my opinion. It's a beautiful structure, trees that don't happen overnight, great yard space, as it exists, like it should, because it's been part of the fabric of the street for a really long time. It's, I think, it fits in very well. And allowing the applicant to use this driveway to get back to the parking lot is a really important component of not dramatically changing what you see from Main Street. So that indeed is one of the provisions that would be modified with the proposal. Typically, we would require a much wider driveway to get to off-street parking. But particularly with the applicant's willingness to allow this to turn into a cross-access if, for example, should the use to the north change, which frankly, I hope happens sometime in the relatively near future.
Shared access or cross-access?
It would be both, really. So.
So they'd get rid of the landscaping strip there?
Get rid of the landscaping strip there. This expands, and then it is indeed the access to both uses.
Which would be awesome.
Sure, make it better for their customers to enter the back of their building.
On both sides, because anybody that's tried.
How soon is that planning to occur?
Let me be clear. I'm aware of no plans that the property in order to the north has to change. But we would put in place, and there's a document, draft document in the staff report, cross-access easement, that would allow for the city to require improvements to be made with the change of use to the north if that ever happens.
Perfect.
Just to get that option established now. And the applicant, I understand, is willing to.
And the landscaping strip is on the, it's part of the property to the north?
Yeah, I think the majority of landscaping is on.
Yeah, that's why that would work. Okay.
Property to the north, exactly like you said. Incidentally, we try to combine accesses every chance we get on roads like Main Street, just for purposes of reducing the number of points of conflict that we have on streets like that, generally make things safer and make traffic, make it possible for traffic to flow a little bit better. Maybe just to touch on a couple of other highlights relative to the parking lot design in the back. And I think this really goes to the intent of the development enhancement overlay, which is not to give an applicant or a developer a free pass to not meet fundamental requirements that we have. But simply the geometry that they have to work with, the width of the property, it is what it is. So in order for them to provide parking in the back, a situation where you have, I'd say, double-loaded parking, one drive out, parking spaces on both sides, we're giving up by way of allowing them to have slightly shorter parking stalls, with I think also a slightly narrower driveway, by way of a foot or so, and Brandon or Mike are both much bigger than I am. And also a slightly narrower landscaping strip around the outside than what we typically would, which I think in each of those respects is an appropriate compromise in order to get what is being proposed now, which is adequate parking for this particular use. And that's maybe the last thing that I want to touch on. As staff is recommending approval of this, it would come with a condition that would require any future occupant of the building, if the use is anything other than a legal office, let's say, or professional office, to again go through the process of having the development enhancement overlay re-approved. We're particularly comfortable with this use, understanding what the anticipated kind of traffic to and from the site would be, day in and day out. And we simply want to reserve that right to review it again, so that if, let's just say, for example, somebody wanted to go from using this property as a law office to maybe like a pediatrician's office, or the dentist, or something like that, where, for example, maybe a one-way driveway to get to a parking lot today, it just would be a failure, in our opinion, and that type of a thing. We'd like to make sure that that opportunity to review things again is maintained. And I believe the applicant's comfortable with that. And let me maybe just in closing mention that I genuinely appreciate the effort that the applicant went into in providing the supporting materials that they provided relative to their perspective on the design elements of the site, the needs of the site, and how they're proposing to, just as I view it, make everything work. So all those things taken into consideration have led staff to recommend, like I mentioned earlier, that the proposed development enhancement overlay be approved. We've noted a number of conditions that come with our recommendation on the staff report, including as well the finding that we think this certainly can conform to the findings that are required with the use of the development enhancement overlay. And that's our recommendation. Like the chairman mentioned earlier, this is a public hearing. The applicant's here. I'm asking you to answer any questions that you have.
So Dave, you mentioned that if the use were to change, like a dental office or whatever, looks like Condition 7 requires anyways that if that use changes, that it comes back before the city?
That's exactly.
How are you defining the current use in this application?
I think, our ordinance would simply describe it as professional office.
And is there a variance on the number of parking stalls, or just the length and width of the parking stalls?
I think they've met the required number of spaces with the lot.
And there's an additional variance for the building setback on the north side? Is that correct? As part of this?
Not the building setback, but the width of the accessway.
Okay.
Dave, do you have your keys real fast, like, is there? Do you have people up here that can't hear you, so you can read the journals?
Oh, great, yeah, thanks. And actually, you're probably right, because for this to be a commercial use, I think the setback is greater.
Say that again. I'm what?
Well, let me be clear. I think there's a chance that maybe you might be right.
Maybe.
As it is now, as a residential use, a 10-foot setback is required, but with the change, typically we require a greater setback, I think.
Okay, I have a question on the page four of the site plan addendum. Please note that the site plan does not indicate where the masonry wall is to be built. Our plan's to build a six-foot masonry wall along the south property line, beginning at the electric pole, continuing to the southwest corner. It'll also run the length of the west property line, wall on the south side, will about the existing brick wall. And then underneath it says something about a precast fence quote. Is that the same thing? That's not the same kind of precast fence that we've talked about that's hollow? No, we're talking about masonry.
We are. If we're very familiar with that particular brand, like they've noted, I can't see the page number, but what they suggested that they would do meets the requirements that we have for having a masonry wall between commercial and residential structures.
And that's on the south and west? That's not what we're talking, that's on the opposite side that we're talking about where the driveway?
It is.
Will go?
Yes.
Okay.
Although I think they are, they are proposing to construct some wall on the north property line, maybe.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk to you about that. So.
That's great.
You can see on this here, on that south property line, there's a tree right in the middle, right at the top corner there. Actually, you see the dark line goes down. So that's the brick wall that you saw.
Round and pointing?
Oh, we've got lasers?
Yeah. Got all the fun.
Okay. So down here, there is an existing block wall, and then this turns to, it's a vinyl fence that's already there. We would start where that wall ends, and then come here and along this property line, so that all of the residential areas, this one's commercial, so my understanding is that's not required on this side. But this residential, it is required. The one thing I will say is this right here, this is a vinyl fence. There's not going to be any parking or driving there. And our thinking was we wanted to try to maintain the look and feel of the neighborhood type of situation. So we would come into where that brick wall was already built, and then start there and take the masonry wall all the way around.
Thank you.
Does the enhancement overlay zone provide for signage variances as well? Or do they just need to comply with typical signage for the zone?
I don't believe yet that's been considered as any part of a proposal.
Right.
Tied to the development enhancement overlay.
But would they have to come back for a signage variance, depending on what they're asking for? I'm just trying to think ahead for them.
I don't believe so.
Okay. You're probably good with the way it's.
Yeah, and the plan is we've got Creative Signs, who's already designed up the signs, and they're going to apply for the sign permit.
Sure.
The plan is just to conform with whatever, with what the city's requirements are, which is six-foot tall monument sign. And then we'll have some signs on the building, which is far less than 15%, just basically the name of law from on the building.
Monument sign in the park strip?
Monument sign, no, it will not be in the park strip. It'll be back on the property, to the, that'd be to the south of the sign mark.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, let's move into public hearings. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to address this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will move out of public hearing. Anybody have any additional questions or comments? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed zone change for the Shriver Law Office, with the conditions as listed by staff.
Okay, we've got a motion.
A second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Recommendation passes. Next agenda item, also a public hearing, is Sunrock Industrial.
Once again, thank you, Chairman. This is similar to what you just considered, where we're not proposing that the map be modified to change the physical zoning of the property, but rather simply to apply an overlay. And with that in mind, Mike, you could provide a little bit about this, as was the case with previous item. Some commissioners, I think, will recall conversations that we had in 2019, 2020, about the prospect of Sunrock relocating the operations they have on Arrowhead Trail, south of the town, south side of Arrowhead Trail, to property that one of their sister companies owns on the north end of Spanish Fork, north of the airport.
They want you to use the mic. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Thanks. So, as we started to have conversations about that happening, we realized that our zoning ordinance didn't allow for some of the things that Sunrock has historically done in the south part of town, in areas on the north part of the city that are zoned industrial one. Which after quite a bit of conversation, different presentations of the planning commission, city council, and so forth, led to the creation of what we call the aggregate transportation, storage, and reclamation overlay zone. That was crafted 100% just for this proposal. In fact, I would say that it was crafted really so as to try to limit situations in the community where somebody could have, for example, a rock-crushing, concrete recycling, asphalt recycling, combined with trucking kind of an operation, so that those operations would be remote, maybe from things like Main Street, or key properties around certain interchanges, and so as to require a certain amount of acreage for operations like that, for a lot of reasons, including the idea that if somebody has enough space to work with, and the likelihood that those activities would impact neighbors would be significantly less. When we originally were thinking that that move might occur, we were actually looking at a neighboring property here, 80 acres, owned by Clyde Companies, again, a sister company to Sunrock. Since then, they've acquired 40 acres that are adjacent to that, to the west. As staff, we're just as comfortable with the facility being located here as we were with it being located next to it on that 80-acre site. You recall, for example, just again, kind of relative to the big picture, the months kind of blur for me, I'm sorry, I think it was January, where we had a lengthy discussion about a proposed master plan development effect on that site. And that's just to illustrate that there are a series of different conversations all happening at the same time. But what we have now with this site is a site plan that has been approved by the Development Review Committee. That approval is subject to the city council approving this particular overlay. We also have a preliminary plat proposal, which really starts to put some of the fundamentals in terms of right-of-way dedication and that type of thing in place, so as to get to where utilities and that type of thing would be available for the development of this site. And we have an applicant that is prepared to describe the different things that they will do, and that they're ready to be subject to, from an operational standpoint, to make sure that some of the things that typically communities are concerned about with crushing operations and the like, which I think predominantly is nuisance dust, noise, perhaps traffic, which in this case, I understand that there may be some neighbors along this particular road that won't appreciate additional traffic coming from this, but given its proximity to a state route, from the city's perspective, it's a pretty appropriate location for the use that we're talking about. All of which, again, with the understanding or the belief on the part of staff, that the applicant's very capable of addressing the typical concerns with this type of an operation, and I'll certainly let them speak for themselves. We're comfortable recommending that the proposed development enhancement overlay be approved. Maybe just a couple of other things that are indicated on different images that we have in the staff report, but yet maybe not as clear as they could be, just by way of my appreciation for the effort that the applicant has put into designing the site in such a way that I think it absolutely will be a great first step to having the area develop. Even though we're talking with this site about a use that is going to have a very, very sizable outside kind of part to just the activities and that type of a thing, with a very contemporary office building that'll be on site, that'll be new, contemporary-looking office building that'll be on site, with fairly lavish landscaping and the like, fronting the public road there to the west. I think this is going to be a great addition, and I appreciate, like I said, the effort that they've put in into the design. But that being said, I know the applicant's here tonight, and they're much more capable than I am to speak to the specifics of things that they would do relative to the overlay and mitigating the concerns that come with that. I'm sure they'd be happy to get presented if you'd like to hear from them. And as with the other item, this is a public hearing, so at some point in time, we want to open it up for that.
Yeah, would be great. Share from the applicant. You can take it off.
Just don't sneeze at us. My name's Jared Morgan. I'm with GWC Capital. We're the land development group for Clyde Companies. We're the newest subsidiary of Clyde Companies, we're about five years old. Our purpose is to assist other sister companies, other subsidiaries of Clyde Companies in re-identifying land uses, and helping just create a more cohesive environment with what goes on around us. As you can imagine, our sand and gravel operations throughout the Intermountain West are somewhat scrutinized, just because of the nature of the industry. However, we're good stewards of our land. We take pride in what we do. And I'm personally really excited to show you kind of where we've come in the last year since I presented to you about a year ago. And as Dave, you know, described, we have had a, you know, a pretty interesting and very collaborative 18 months really with your municipality. And we just really appreciate Dave, and Kimberly, and Brandon, and Michael, and Chris, and your city staff is awesome. And we've really appreciated their just collaborative nature through this process. So we feel like this is a really good public-private partnership that we're entering into, and I'm excited to kind of dive into it a little bit more tonight. We go to the next slide. So this slide here represents what the city has articulated to us, is kind of a, kind of a global industrial area. Some of these parcels are already annexed into your municipality, some of them are not. Some of these parcels are owned by Clyde Companies or a subsidiary of Clyde Companies, some are not. We have property owners around here this evening, like the Williams family and the Blonk family. We've been in discussions with a number of these property owners within the identified red area of, you know, potentially working with them on property acquisition to help facilitate the vision of this industrial park. Sunrock is in the blue there, and they are taking down a 40-acre parcel. They're removing their 80-acre facility and consolidating it, condensing it to a 40-acre parcel, so off of Arrowhead here. And GWC Capital is the group that will be presenting the new subdivision plan for the Arrowhead property. And that will be a joint venture partnership with Sunrock. So while these two projects are being underwritten differently, and they're independent of one another, they do work side by side with each other. This is going to be the new home for Sunrock, the new headquarters for Sunrock, and another subsidiary of ours, Sun Pro Building Materials. Those executive teams will be housed here at this location. So as of this week, we've actually, we've turned in an annexation application for approximately 90-plus, 90 acres of this defined red area.
Can you identify it? Use your.
Yeah. So we have turned in a annexation application for this 72 acres here. It's a signed annexation petition from J6 Properties. We've also turned in a annexation petition from the Nielsen property here. Both of those properties combined is, you know, it's close to 90 acres. The annexation plat, there will likely be two different plats. We're going to have one plat looking west of 800 West, and the other plat would be a plat here. So that's our intent. We're working with Dave's group to realize that and get those annexation applications formalized and submitted, so. We've had an immense amount of interest from parties, large, exciting users. And we have, we have, we have a big vision here, and this is, this has potential to become one of the best industrial centers in all of South, in all of Utah County, really. There's really nothing quite like it with the access to the freeway and the utility infrastructure that we are investing in with the SSD, who's going to be located here, and with the city. We are a party to the pioneering agreement that is going to be paving the way, pun intended, to bring on all of this infrastructure. And so we are investing significant dollars into the off-site utilities to bring all of this online.
Including the future annexation pieces?
Yes. So all of the, all of the infrastructure that's being invested currently will service everything that you see within the red boundary line. That would include sewer, water, and power.
Gas, I see.
Gas, yeah. We were on site yesterday with Tom Cooper from, or you're trying to, Spanish Fork? Power Department, talking about substations and transformers, and we're articulating a robust plan to facilitate some big users here, so. One last point I wanted to make here is what, what this is doing for the area is kind of setting the stage for an RDA discussion that Dave and I are kind of working with some of these users on. And we feel that we'll be generating. And we feel that we'll be generating enough sales tax revenue, property tax and personal tax revenue to get very enticing for the creation of an RDA, which is exciting for me because we're the ones, you know, kind of spearheading this and it's just fun to see it kind of come together, so. Next slide. So this is a depiction of what the Sun Rock and Sun Pro building is, is going to look like. We think that this is a perfect initial user and tenant for the industrial park. This design has come a long way from a year ago and Sun Pro, it wasn't a part of the discussion initially, but now they are. And we're excited to have approximately 40 to 50 high-level jobs in this facility. So headquarters for both, both subsidiaries of Clyde Companies will be located here. This facility will be kind of on the northwest corner of the parcel. And so vehicular access will be coming down 800 west off of SR 77. Semi-truck access is going to be coming off of 3300 north, which is a new right-of-way that we'll be building to the south of the property line. Can you go back to?
Yeah, do you want to show us on the map?
Yeah, go back.
Where those are.
So headquarters, the headquarters will be here. 3300 north is a brand-new building, or a brand-new right-of-way that we'll be constructing that runs east to west here. It ties into 600 west, which is a brand-new right-of-way that will be the primary access for the SSD and our initial industrial user who are actually already under contract with on this 80 acres. And I think my, this just died.
Jared.
So brand-new facilities and right-of-ways here carrying dry utilities and wet utilities. Brand-new right-of-way facilities here carrying wet and dry utilities. The lift station is being located here and that lift station, sewer lift station's going to service, run parallel to SR 77 and it will come down here to service the Sunrock site, which frees up this area for development.
Is that existing road now? Is that a city road or a county road?
Michael?
Do we know?
It's both, it's a combination. It's both. To the north of this site, it's county. Adjacent to this site is city.
John. You guys heard from or had a chance to talk to these property owners?
Yes. Yeah, we've, we've met with this, we've met with this group. They're going to remain there. This right-of-way is going to just make a small curve and come up just to the north of them. But it would allow for their, for their facility to have access to municipal utilities as we complete our.
Did they have any concerns with you guys, with what you presented to them?
No, no. We were, we were hoping to acquire the property, but he's going to remain there. But he's, he's expressed no, no concern over what we have going on here, at least to me. I don't want to speak for him, but he.
But you've, you've not heard of anything?
No.
Do you have a, a site plan that shows how far away the construction-related activities are going to be from that residence? That's not, that's not a residence.
This is a veterinarian.
Veteranarian? Oh, it is, okay.
The only residences in the area are the Thomas family that live here, which were under contract on their piece. And then the Blunk, the Blunk family here, which they're present here tonight and they have 25 years of experience in the area and we're interrupting their quality of life. But they've been fantastic to work with and they're helping us with an easement along here that will help facilitate the sewer lines and these other items, so. Can we go to the next slide? Any, any questions at this point? Okay, next slide. So I want to talk about the overall site plan with you. So if you recall from a year ago, this is very similar to what we proposed a year ago. It's just, we're on a different parcel now, right? So it's been flipped.
Wait, so where's the veterinarian clinic?
Down here.
Okay, still right there, okay, got it.
So this is the new, this will be the new right-of-way, 33,000, 3300 north right here. This site plan is, is, is interesting. As you look kind of across the landscape of our real estate portfolio within our sand and gravel operations, this, this is setting a new standard for Clyde Companies, which is exciting for us and it's something that we have, we have to do as a way you continue to operate in growing areas. Any, any roadway that's white, that is asphalt, so a majority of the semi-truck traffic will be driving on asphalt access to the facility. Anything in gray is a recycled asphalt product, which is a dust mitigator and it's very efficient when it comes to, when it comes to dust mitigation. So this is the, the stockpile area. The only thing that's not called out here is, is a recycled asphalt road that we still haven't quite defined the internal, just the internal navigation within the stockpile area, but it would be a recycled asphalt product as well. So any, any like permanent roadways will have a recycled asphalt road. It would likely wrap around the backside of the stockpiles and, and just make a loop like this. But we're still kind of articulating that in the plan.
What do you guys plan to do for dust mitigation on your stockpiles?
So we'll, the next couple of slides, we kind of get in, we get into that. There's, there's a lot of wire that's deployed on the site daily, on the stockpiles and also on any areas that wouldn't have a rap product or an asphalt product. And we're, we're regulated by a division of air quality. And we have two of our environmental engineers here tonight to answer these questions for you. They'll speak much further to this.
One question while we have this slide up, it looks like you've got access to the large trucks that are going to come from over here into this.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like you've got anything to access the road on the west for the large trucks, is that right?
Yeah, so we, we, and Ernie may need to speak to this if I miss, if I misspeak, but vehicular, we, we want this to be vehicular access only really on 800 north. Now, there, there will be, you know, 3300 north will connect here to 800 west, right?
Right.
So there will be semi-trucks that come up and down here, but the intent is to have a majority of the semi-truck traffic entering and exiting through this ingress, egress here on 3300 north.
So if you do have heavy trucks on 800 west, this road isn't that good of a road, will it need to be improved to sustain the traffic that'll be there, the heavy loads?
Yeah, so as part of the development approval, we do have to improve the frontage here, so there will be roadway expansion and improvement, you know, facing the west boundary of the site.
So that's just for this development, you're not talking about going all the way up, all the way up to the main?
It, it will when those properties develop.
But at this point, just, just for this portion?
Yeah, as soon as we turn in another preliminary plat on some of those other parcels we're talking about, then that would trigger improvement on the roadway.
Yeah, let's talk about this road just for a minute, because it's not in as well. Your property, I guess Clyde still has the property to the east, is that correct?
Yeah, do you want to go back to the aerial?
Does this road, are you planning on having this extend out to Main Street or is this going to tie and come up to the north somewhere?
Yeah, so I'll describe. So there's a, there's a CMGC contract that GWC is entering into with Sunrock. And that CMGC contract has three parties associated with it from a funding standpoint, GWC, the SSD and Spanish Fort City. So within the work scope of the CMGC contract, you're going to see 3450, 3450 north, a new roadway that's going to come in here and it kind of like dips down here, something like that. That's going to be the SSD's primary access into their facility. That's captured in the CMGC, no problem. That's captured in the CMGC contract along with a 600 west extension down to 3000 north and then 3000 north connects you to Main Street. And so that's all within the work scope of Sunrock's job for this year.
So in your mind, where do you see flow of traffic for your big trucks coming off of I-15 coming from?
They'll all be coming from the 400 south exit here and coming down SR 77 to 600 west and coming down to this, access the site or the new interchange which is planned over here, 2700. That would be coming up this way and accessing the site. So two interchanges we'll be utilizing. Let's go to the next slide. Any, many more questions about the site plan itself? Okay, next slide. So this was a big topic last year as we were discussing how the site is regulated. So just wanted to bring up facts about, about the regulation. The site will be governed by the Utah Department of Environmental Quality or Division of Air Quality. Facility is also required to meet the federal APA's emission reporting standards and a fugitive dust control application will be submitted to the DAQ, which we gave you copies of what that might look like last year. And so I guess to answer your question about dust mitigation, it's captured in the fugitive dust control application that we have to submit to the DAQ for the site, site-specific.
So does this, is this any different than what's at your current site? Does this apply to your current site?
All of our sites are, all of our sites fall under the same, the same requirements, but I would probably let our, our environmental team speak to that a little more. Do you want to expand on that?
I have a question regarding that. You know, as you get newer regulations, some sites that are grandfathered in don't necessarily have the latest requirements. Will there, will there be onsite equipment here that's 24/7 recording or will it be just intermittent testing of the dust control? In other words, will you have a site on this or will you have some equipment onsite that regulates or not regulates, that records and monitors dust control?
I'm going to let one of our environmental gentlemen speak to that.
As far as continual.
Yeah, why don't you come up and introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Kevin Darbitt. I work for Clyde Companies in the Environmental Properties Department. As far as continual opacity monitoring, there, there won't be any on this site. It'll be the same or similar as to what we have at our other gravel operations. We are required, as Jared mentioned, we are, we're governed by Utah Division of Air Quality at the state level. There's also a number of federal subparts that we're subject to specific to non-metallic mineral processing. As part of that, each piece of equipment we bring on-site that, that we want to crush with or screen with, we have to do an initial demonstration, they call it an opacity demonstration, just basically of how much dust is coming off of that. And this is something we do with, with all of our equipment before we bring it into operation. So that's something that will be done. And then we also ensure that we're running water sprays, the proper water sprays as we call out in our fugitive dust plan to make sure that we're controlling that. But as far as a, as a continual opacity monitor system or a particulate monitoring system, no, no, there won't be.
It's not required?
No, no, not required.
Go to the next slide. Just want to give you an idea of the environmental impact by using rap versus kind of an unpaved, you know, material to drive on. So I guess to answer your question, the, how this site is going to be different from the current site on Arrow, on Arrowhead is that most permanent right-of-ways will have a rap material, right? And so dust that kicks out from trucks to drive on the current site, that's going to be greatly mitigated by, by the rap. So what this is, what this is demonstrating is, this is based on 5,000 miles traveled annually on each, on each of those surfaces. So 5,000 miles traveled on each of these surfaces would, would kick up this amount of PM10 emission. And it's, so it's, rap greatly reduces the dust on, within a site.
Was rap part of your presentation before? I'm trying to remember if I.
It was.
Was it? I know they showed the, was it you that was here for that?
Yes.
Showed the video of the.
Yeah, what, yeah, the difference.
Could you tell us what rap stands for?
Yeah, recycled asphalt. Product. Recycled asphalt.
It is now.
Yeah. Drive on record. Okay, next slide. Just to give you an idea, we want to just, we want to let you know, this is based on about 13,000 miles traveled annually in a passenger truck. This looks like one of the Williams family F-250s. I don't know if they're Ford guys though, but that's, you know, about PM10 emission, 20,000 pounds annually. I drive a Ford truck, I mean Clyde Companies say, it's a, you know, we're, we're, we're working hard on, on our fleet to make it more environmentally friendly. We have quite a few trucks now, cement mixers and things that are run off of natural gas. We're trying to reduce our carbon footprint. But can you go to the next slide? Reason why I want to show you that slide is that our crusher, if we're running about 150,000 tons of material, which is going to be our average, you know, our average amount of tons produced a year, it's, it's substantially less from an emissions standpoint. So these are, these are efficient, efficient machinery that we use on, on our sites. Next slide. I think the last slide is just regarding water. So I was just going to speak to the amount of water that we deploy on our sites, it's significant. We have a water tank onsite where the water trucks being filled each day and we deploy them regularly, so.
They talked also prior about some other liquid that they spray on the ground to control dust.
Yeah, so.
Or as calm.
Yeah, it's called magnesium chloride.
Yeah, you guys plan on using any of that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll identify areas, problem areas where magnesium chloride would be an applicable solution for, for, for a problem. But we feel like what we've presented will sit much, will more than satisfy our needs from a dust control standpoint.
So the water that you'll use here, will it be from city sources or will it be, or will it be from another source, irrigation water?
No, that's a good question. Is this PI water or culinary water? This would probably be PI water, needed to pay for.
But it'll be provided by Spanish Fort City?
Yes.
Yeah.
What are the hours of operation for the crushing operation?
The crushing is intermittent. It's, it's, it's controlled by the economy and the need, so, you know, this is a, you know, this is a eight-to-five facility. Some days it'll be running a lot more than others. When, when we took a tour last year on-site, we showed, we demonstrated what it was like, but we had to kick that thing on to, to get it going. It is not, by no means is it an all-day operation.
Will, will the crusher on this site be about the same as the crusher that's sitting on the other side of the freeway where the new interchange is going to go?
I guess not.
You've got, you've got a crusher on that side that's been active a little bit, most of the time not, but is it about, will it be about the same or a little larger?
It should be the exact, so they were in there in December crushing concrete and it'll be likely the exact same crusher there.
Would there be more than one? I guess it depends on.
Depending on needs, but I wouldn't think so, yeah, typically no. They'll bring it in to recycle and it's going to be very intermittent. And typically depending on, on the permitting side of things, we're, we're usually restricted to less than 16 hours a day as well.
How many?
Most of your crushers now are mobile, so they can be moved in or taken to another site if needed.
Yeah, they're typically tractor crushers, yeah.
Okay.
How many trucks would you anticipate coming down the roads on a daily basis? Obviously it's going to change on need, but how many?
Yeah, so we anticipate about 40 to 50 vehicles coming in and out of the facility to utilize the office building and the shop. There's also a paint shop in there. And then the numbers were between 50 to 100 trucks daily will be coming in and out of the facility.
And what's located on that north side of the, the site? There was one more building there that you didn't mention.
Go back to the aerial. Right here?
Yeah, that, that corner.
This, this parcel is horse property, that's not a, that's not a building or facility. That's a, this is. That's, this is, I think, a corral, but this is owned by the Shep family and they have horse property here. This, there's no residents living here, this is, I'm sorry?
Kaiko, isn't it?
Kaiko, that's right. That's where Kaiko's operation runs out of, that's a three-acre parcel. So there's no residents to the north of it.
Thank you.
And that's our slide deck for this evening, so any other questions?
Just a general question with the proposed annexation and everything there. You must have a pretty good idea that you have a number of operations that would love to be in this industrial area. How long do you think that it would take to include all this other area into what Sunrock sees as a very profitable operation?
Yeah, good question. This commission wasn't a part of the preliminary discussions that we had with the user, but the project was called Project Aggie and this was a, this was a part of, later part of last year of this project.
Aggie?
Yeah, it was a...
Is that probably why it went slowly, because it wasn't Project Cougar?
Yeah, actually, I don't even know why we called it Aggie.
Right?
It's a bad name.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's a perfectly great name.
That user was a unique user. That user has come and gone. That facility was a large-scale facility that required its own transformer. They've come and gone just due to some reconciliation of some of their other facilities across the Intermountain West. But since then, we've had a significant amount of interest. In fact, yeah, we are under contract with a large-scale industrial developer for this 76 acres now as Sunrock's kind of bumping out into here. They'll be presenting, well, as soon as we actually close with them, they'll be presenting a site plan for review. The minute that Sunrock is able to occupy their space, the utilities will be located here. This really will free up a lot of our real estate that we're acquiring here. And we would anticipate, if we don't already have spec buildings being planned, we will immediately engage with groups on that. It's, industrial space is very interesting right now. You know, you have millions of square feet coming online in the state of Utah that's speculative. So that means that there's no tenant in line for the building before the lending institution provides the capital for the building and the developer. But they're doing that because they know that there's so much pent-up demand that the lending institution takes the risk because they will have a tenant ready by the time of certificate of occupancy. It's just, it's really incredible and we think that your municipality has a real gem here. And we're just excited to be a part of it, so.
When do you guys expect, if everything approves and goes through fine, when do you think the lift station will get underway?
So we just wired funds for the purchase of the ride-of-way between our parcel and the William Conley parcel. So the ride-of-way, those funds will hit the account on Friday. And that will, that's really the last piece needed in order to start full design and construction of the lift station. So Forsgren is the engineering firm that the SSD is contracted with for the lift station. They're just taking the design that they had here originally, putting it here on the Conley property. We're saving a lot of sewer depth there, which is nice for everybody around us. And we, I mean, the timeline, Sunrock wants to be here by the end of the year, so that's your timeline. We want to have, well, it's ambitious, but we've laid a ton of groundwork over the last 18 months for this. I mean, we're ready to sign the CMGC contract and let Sunrock just go full steam ahead on all the offsites.
Sunrock is a unique developer here because you do know a few excavators and a few providers of material.
Yeah.
It's kind of going to be an in-company project for you guys.
Yeah, and they have confidence that they'll get paid too, because I'd get fired if that didn't happen, so.
You guys have been, you've been patient and you've done a lot from the initial project that you brought before the city and to what we saw tonight, you guys have put in a lot of work, made some changes on our behalf, things that we've requested and just want you to know that we appreciate that. Initially, you guys have talked about doing some berms around the property, or the berm's gone, you're just doing masonry walls? Are you still doing some berms?
Well, do you want to go back to the site plan? So, I mean, we have a masonry wall, obviously, street-facing masonry wall. We, because we don't know what's going to happen here, we don't, we currently have a berm just because here and here, because we want to, you know, we want to do what's best for this new user over here and we want to do what's best for this north user. And we're hoping that we own this property and Sunrock may want to expand into this property. So allowing us to have something a little less permanent here would give us the flexibility for growth. But if we don't do anything here and this develops, then a masonry wall would go up.
Would that be required or so we're just waiting to see kind of on some agreements between that property owner? Okay, thank you Jared. Anybody else from your team that wants to present or say anything tonight?
Thanks.
Thank you.
I could maybe just touch on a couple of things. I appreciate, I really appreciate Mr. Morgan's presentation. And maybe just one big picture thing that I can't help but to say...
You want to use the...
The Aggies thing? You're going to talk about the Aggies thing?
Nope. Top golf, you mean, right?
Yes.
What he described about all of the infrastructure that's being designed and funded, planned for and so forth, but is part of the community, is incredible and it's something, that's something that we've been waiting for forever. As he also mentioned, the proximity of these properties, I-15, different things like that and just the demand for the type of development that we're talking about here in Utah County today really presents a tremendous opportunity, I think, for Spanish Fork City. I don't think Spanish Fork, you know, really, you go back many, many decades, has not been what a lot of communities along the Wasatch Front have been, which are bedroom communities that really don't have much of a mix of land uses. They don't have, they don't have industry, they don't have jobs, they don't have commerce, different things like that. I think certainly one of the community strengths always has been that diversity, those different opportunities. I think that's contributed very, very well to quality of life. It's funded things like, you know, great school district, it's funded great municipal services and all of those types of things. So this is incredible, the bigger picture, I think, idea of everything that's happening on this end of the community. And as funny as it is, we'll talk with the next two items about a very similar thing happening out towards the mouth of Spanish Fork Canyon where but for a lack of utilities, you know, that area would have developed, I think, a long time ago. And I think that key's about to turn, so I just had to mention that frankly because it's something that I think is extremely exciting. That being said as well, just to clarify a couple of things that Mr. Morgan touched on. He talked about an RDA, which is, that's actually, gets used a couple of different ways, redevelopment area, which, for example, in Spanish Fork City right now, we have five or six, I think, active redevelopment areas, which is a geographical area with a plan and a budget that is afforded in Utah state law where cities and counties can create these areas to take advantage of the revenue that comes with new development to fund different things. Typically, that revenue is used to fund public improvements. So for example, in the area that we're talking about here, should there need to be, let's say, a new power substation constructed, that would be a very appropriate use of some of the funds that might be generated through the creation of that type of a tool. And that indeed is something that we've been talking with Jared and his folks about for quite some time. In fact, we talked to the city council about that last night. It's a tool that might be very helpful in this part of the community and maybe in a couple of other areas as well because of how the financing of that works and nobody wants to hear me go into details on that tonight. But I'd be happy to talk about that offline if anybody wants to. It takes time to really accumulate revenue and get to the point where you have something that's sufficient really to make a difference on a big improvement or something like that. But the timing's great to get that going, that's RDA that he mentioned. He also mentioned SSD, which is the solid, S-D...
Sewer service.
Special Service District, thank you, yeah. So it's the, I call it the transfer station, but it's the solid waste service district, I think, is really... See, I'm easily thrown off, thank you. So right now, this special service district has a facility in Springville, we've talked about that before. The use of that property there is being discontinued and that will be relocated. Obviously a new facility. I think they anticipate commencing construction on that within the next year. And again, like Mr. Morgan described, there's kind of a three-party arrangement in place between that special service district, Spanish Fork City, and the Clyde Company folks to fund that infrastructure that I mentioned at the onset. One of the other things that Mr. Morgan referenced is a particular type of contract to get infrastructure built. We use this form sometimes as the city. I think it's really gained popularity a lot in the last decade. It's a general, no, I'm sorry, it's a construction management general contractor type of contractual arrangement that developers or property enter into that has benefits in terms of providing a particular type of oversight on development projects and sometimes I think also has a benefit in terms of limiting the financial liability the property owner might have in hiring somebody to make certain improvements and that type of a thing. That's that CMGC contract that Mr. Morgan mentioned. And again, this is something that, for reasons that go well beyond. The proposal for the overlay that is being presented tonight, I think, really has exciting potential for the city. And that's it for me. Unless you have any questions?
So Sunrock's contributing to the costs for the lift station on this property, this development. Are they also contributing for the, on Arrowhead Trail? The, out towards the Benjamin, the lift station that's going to go in there?
Great question, which incidentally is the third huge project that's going on in the city. We don't have anything on the agenda tonight relative to that, but it's going to be the same effect. So we kind of touched, you know, three, we really only kind of have three corners of the city. Each one of them is receiving a tremendous infrastructure investment as we speak. The city has bonded for, I think, about $13 million altogether of improvements that include a sewer lift station and a huge sewer line that will connect the Benjamin interchange, let's just say, with our wastewater treatment plant on Second East at about 2,000 North. The work on that just started. We just noticed yesterday trying to come from North Main where Main Street's been closed. And that, as I understand it, is the first leg of the sewer line project that eventually will get all the way down to Benjamin to be done this year. Which because the city's taken the lead on funding that the way that we have, the Sunrock development on the south end of town won't contribute to that directly, but will inasmuch as when building permits get issued for that, that's ultimately how that project will get funded.
I noticed they've started digging, it looks like, for that lift station.
Yep.
Yeah, nice.
Okay, so the current zone is what, and we're overlaying and we're, and they're proposing to have the zone overlay to go to what? What do those two look like?
The current zone is industrial one and that won't change with what's proposed. And the overlay, which is a mouthful, just want to make sure I get it right. The aggregate, excuse me, aggregate transportation, storage and reclamation overlay is the specific approval that's required because otherwise we don't allow, for example, rock crushing in the industrial one zone. So I'm sorry if I wasn't clear about that to begin with, but that, that probably more than anything else...
That is the main reason we're doing that.
Is what makes this necessary. And in all candor, I think that's a very important thing for the city to be cognizant of. There are operations that do what is proposed here, recycle concrete, crush rock, you know, produce all different types of aggregate products that I think are operated in such a way that they can be great neighbors in an environment like this. And we absolutely see the opposite as well. And this overlay allows for the kind of scrutiny that has resulted in what you saw tonight with kind of their operational planning and the level of improvements that they're making and that sort of a thing. Rather than otherwise having it be an allowed use that wouldn't give the city the same ability to oversee some specifics.
Okay.
All right, with that, let's move into public hearing for this. So if there's anybody in the crowd that would like to address us and ask questions or comments on this, we ask, you keep it to about three, three to four minutes. When, yeah, when you come up, just use the microphone so they can hear you in TV land and also state your name, if that's all right.
My name's Merlin Hickman. So I am with the pasture to the north that he referred to as the horse pasture. So we have a few questions as to what will happen on that property. He kind of identified it as, we...
So you're right here?
Picture back up.
This is you?
Oh, is that it right there?
This is you right here?
Yeah, so, there we go. With the length of this property right here, you said you was going to bring a block wall down, how far? So we're in the horse pasture right next here. And you said you was going to bring a block wall down that side. Yeah, well, let me state a little bit about this Shep property. This property's been in the family for over 50 years. We have no intentions of changing the use of it as the family right now. So we intend to use this, we intend to, it's in county right now, County Greenbelt. We intend to keep it in County Greenbelt, we have no desire to change that at this point, nor do we have in the future that we know of. I'm not old enough that you're going to be talking to my kids yet. So how far down are you going to, what are you going to do to separate our boundaries? What is your distance from your fence to your business that we're going to be dealing with?
Is there a road currently between the two properties? No road?
So as mentioned, we intend to have a berm that would separate our two properties.
Are you familiar with what a berm is?
Just a dirt berm?
Well, I mean, it's something...
How big's your dirt berm going to be? I mean, is this going to be...
How does it compare to the berm that you've currently got on the current...
Jared, is that a masonry wall right there?
Well...
That's the berm, he said they're putting a berm on the north and on the eastern property.
It's going to be landscaped, isn't it, according to your...
There'll be some landscaping and berm. I mean, the berm that's going to be dictated by, through the city process as we go through...
Is this, this is not a road?
No.
It's just a little deceiving.
Where's the property line on, property line is...
Right there.
That's the property line, okay.
That's property line. By the way, all of those property lines down there are somewhat subject from the surveyor that done it hundreds of years ago. I don't know if you, I'm sure you've had it staked.
Yeah, in fact, I've been trying to get in touch with...
Because I think some of our lands on your...
It looks like you guys have a no man's land right here.
Yeah, I've been trying to get in touch with you about a boundary line adjustment.
They should clean it up.
Let me get you my card and then let's have a discussion offline about all of this.
My preference would be to get a call with you and walk through the site plan and show you what the design looks like, because I'm not going to be as involved right now as a.
Of course. Of course. Of course. And then as far as the irrigation that we presently receive, we're not having any problems with that irrigation ditch coming down to us, are we? It'll still be maintained, irrigation?
Right. It's going to be piped.
And?
The antennas are piped, but not.
You're going to pipe it to our property?
Yes.
And it'll land right there?
The, the plan that I've seen is very preliminary, okay, but how, how is the pipeline released to the corner of your property?
To the corner of our property? Okay. And then you never answered your question, what the distance is going to be between our properties and yours for the, for what's going on with the?
Yeah. So there are setback requirements.
You got setback? How, what kind of setback? Yeah.
What are they? That's, that's, that was my question for the veterinarian clinic, so this is a good question. What are the setbacks? On the north side, what are the setbacks?
Mine, I can, I can help with a couple of those for sure. So there's no setback requirement on the property line in the industrial zone for an outdoor use like outdoor storage.
Sure.
So in this case, the applicant could go all the way to their property line with everything but a building. And depending on the adjacent use, might even be able to go to the property line with a building. Now, if indeed the property to the north remains as it is, for any part of the site that's involved in outdoor storage that's adjacent to it, a berm won't be adequate. There would have to be a six-foot-tall masonry wall, which could be incorporated into a berm of some kind, but that wall requirement is in place for any outdoor storage areas. They have to be encircled by, encompassed by a six-foot-tall masonry wall. I think Mr. Morgan mentioned that that's the plan for the southern part, which relative then to the setback with the veterinary clinic on the other side, it's going to be different on that end because there's going to be a road.
Between the two.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
So on the north end with a berm, obviously a berm's wider than a masonry wall. When you're talking about a berm, I assume the, the land, the soil, whatever you're using for that berm, all of that resides on the property that's doing the development?
Yeah, there's nothing.
But you just said their actual outdoor stor, if there's outdoor storage, which it looks like there's going to be storage of dirt and gravel, then they'd have to do the six-foot masonry wall on the north boundary line, is what you said.
If, if the property ownership doesn't change, which from what we're hearing tonight, obviously, obviously they're still trying to communicate that and whatever, but, but as of right now, from what I'm hearing, berm's out of the question. It's going to be a masonry wall.
Well, you could do a berm, but you'd have to do the wall as well.
So you could still do a berm and then put a wall on top of it?
Exactly. I don't necessarily think that's their intent, but that, the wall is what's required for the berm or not.
Now that being said, if the wall ends up being required, does that scale the entire property line to the north?
No, just the part that's involved in outdoor storage. So as I've understood, they're proposing to develop the site, the area around their office building is not going to be outdoor storage, maybe parking or something like that, but it'd be, be the part that kind of has that tan view to it.
So everything that you're showing, the piles of product, would need to have a wall?
That's what, as I interpret it, yes, that would have to be encompassed with a masonry wall.
So Jared, if a wall were required on the north end of the property where you've got your outdoor storage, would it make more sense just to complete the wall all the way to the road or would you just do where it was required?
Yeah, I have to defer to Sunrock's guarantee on all that. But I'll give you my card. Let's have a discussion.
I have my brother-in-law here with the support, with the chefs here. Do you have any questions? Yeah, do you mind?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just state your name, if that's all right.
Yep, my name's Terry Brinley, and I've been a resident of Spanish Fork for around 41 years. And as he, can you go back to that area with you?
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah. And so this property's been in the family for over 50 years, and we have a horse farm down there. And we, in this area right here, it's an arena. And we have youth groups, all of our grandkids. We have riding lessons, a lot of youth groups right there. My concern would be the traffic going through right here. He said most of the big trucks will come in this way, but there's some that are going to come in this way. And big trucks spook horses, and that would be my concern with these little kids. The other concern is what's to stop these big trucks from coming in here? He says most of them are coming this way. What's to stop them from coming in this way? And this road is like John, Mr. Mendenhall said, is not a good road. It's really narrow. There's no shoulder on it. And we park, right here's our, let's see, right here's our gate, and we park horses, horse trailer there temporary for loading and unloading, and kids getting in and out. There's not room for a trailer to be parked there. And I don't think there's room for two big trucks to pass each other on that road. And he, the applicant mentioned that he had talked to a lot of the property owners around here. Sounds like to me he talked to most of them except for us. We got a flyer in the mail or a notification, this was, this meeting tonight, and that's the first we'd heard about it. So I'm certainly here in opposition of this. And another concern is the grit, and you get 100 trucks coming in and out of here today, the grit that it causes on the road. You know, they go in the plant and out, and is there going to be any kind of road sweeping service? You always get that grit on the shoulder just from the traffic. And another question would be, where is the rock crusher going to be in here? And what is controlling the dust on the rock crusher? Would be another question. Is that where the rock crusher's going to be?
That's somewhere in the town, I assume, Jared, right?
Correct, yes.
So that's fairly close to our property.
What hours do you guys operate typically? When do you have in the evenings, afternoons?
Three to seven or eight, even 9:30 at night on summer, in the summer.
Do you keep horses on site or do you bring them down?
Horses are there 24/7.
Okay.
Yep. So those are some of my questions.
If there were no large trucks, haulers that were coming down that road, it was just the office trucks, would you still have concerns?
I wouldn't have as many concerns with the noise and the width of the road now. But, you know, my, I mean, they say they're coming in here, the big ones, but what's to stop them from coming in that way? You know? What if some of these drivers decide, well, this is easier to get to from here? I don't know what's to stop that.
And maybe, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just from here, with that being a public road, I don't think there is anything that would stop anybody from using it like they do today.
Whether they're a business part of this company or anybody else there. So it's a public city-county road? Would we decide on that?
It's a public road. I think the county probably maintains all of it today. The county will not maintain the improvements that will be made along this frontage. So that would clearly be the city's responsibility to maintain and so forth. And I appreciate the questions that are being raised about the condition of the road between here and the state highway. And indeed, you know, that idea of creating a redevelopment area, the fund improvements that maybe don't come with the development of a road's frontage like what would happen here, I think that's exactly what those funds would be intended to provide for, would be those types of improvements that otherwise you can't do. You know, like I said, those, those funds accrue over time, but that would be, is part of the idea of that aspect of what Mr. Morgan described.
Question for you, Dave. I've been thinking about this kind of from the beginning. Does the zone, and I know we, we passed an amendment to the zone that they're going to be changing it to, and I keep trying to bring it up in, in my head, but I can't bring all of it up. Is there any requirement for rock crushing or any of those more intrusive activities to be a certain distance from the property line?
There's not inherently a requirement, but with this being a legislative act, that can be prescribed by all means. So that, just as a condition of the overlay being implemented, you can define that. The city council ultimately will define it with approval, but you can make a recommendation of that.
Yeah, the two things I think are thinking about having the distance from the property
line for the rock crushing and the signage for trucks that are coming in. I mean, I mean, that seems like that's the, the only way you can really do it, is if there's signage out on the main road.
It's a public road, though. I don't, I don't feel comfortable, this is my personal, we're asked, right? So I don't feel comfortable discriminating against, like, the semi-truck driver to not use the public road.
No, they could, but I agree that signage can help educate or help train them in a certain way.
Right. Not prohibit, not prohibitive signing, but.
Because honestly, if I'm a truck driver, I come in from Main Street, I come down this road. I come, is this a one-way in, one-way out on, on your entrances here, or they could come in either entrance?
That's a good question. Do you have an answer?
So if they were to come in here, come out here, obviously the quickest way to get back to the freeway would be a right turn and a straight up to that main road.
That's been the intent, the careful designing of this layout, that all the truck parking is over here in the large, two large gray areas.
Right here. And they access it through this, this one here?
All the drivers are going to be schooled and directed, that that's how they go in and that's how they go out, and they don't come out that north, west, or.
So I got, I've got a.
If we could have any common sense with the microphone, that would be great.
Okay, yeah. So I've got a question. Sorry, go ahead.
He stated that there were, were going to be some big trucks coming in here. He said most of them are coming in here, but there are going to be some. If you guys will go look at that road, that road's not sufficient for a big truck.
And one thing that would really be discouraging for this road as it is now is it's narrow.
Right.
And if you have, if you have a truck, a large truck, and especially if you've got a pup, it's going to be awfully, it's going to be difficult when you come out onto 800 West. You know, that's going to be a tight turn, and it'd take up the entire road to make that turn. So it wouldn't be wise to have the trucks come that way until 800 West becomes wider and you can get in and out.
Right. And he said it, he was going to widen it to the property line, right?
Yeah. My, my comment is the same as Dave. We can't prohibit it, but we are encouraging all semi-truck drivers to come up to 3300 North.
So this road currently doesn't exist, right?
Right, that's, it's being built.
So why, why, let me ask the question, why does the road have to be finished and connected? Why couldn't it finish here so that as they come in this way, they don't have the option to turn right and come up this road? They have to go back the way they came?
We would require, so staff certainly would require the road to connect to serve everything else in the area.
Not just these trucks, but anything?
But also, this for me is, it's comforting in terms of the concern that's being raised. These are the guys, so they're a company that's spending billions of dollars to make that road connection over to Main Street ultimately, or via a different route up to the state highway. I think they intend on using it.
Yeah.
Do we, do we know, do we know that those road connections will be in before they start using the facility? Because right now, this road does exist.
The way the site plan was approved, yes.
We could require it to be Phase 1.
And, you know, another item on the agenda tonight is the approval of preliminary plan that, like I said, that really is just there to define what those road right-of-ways will be and to set the stage for the development of that infrastructure.
So it sounds like there's no way to stop and public traffic on that road?
Yeah. Public traffic on a public road, you can't stop it.
Well, even the big trucks, is what I mean.
But it sounds to me like the intent of Sunrock is to be a good neighbor and try to do the best they can to educate their drivers, direct their drivers to come on those other sides.
What about some of the other concerns?
One question I've got, maybe you can answer or not. How loud is a crusher when it fires up? I'm just wondering, like, what, what noises?
87 decibels.
Could be coming out of there. Is it loud enough that it would spook a horse next door? Or is it just like a, a car starting, a truck starting?
It'd be quieter when the airplane's landing next door.
I guess that's true.
Have you guys ever had issues with planes, with the planes and the noise there with your, with what you've done? No? Okay.
They don't cause a problem. So I'm not sure if you remember, a year or so ago, we had a site visit at the Spanish Fork property.
Go use the mic.
My name's Bill King. I'm with Clyde Companies as well. It was a year, year and a half ago, we had a site visit at the Spanish Fork property. I can't remember who all came out and we actually watched a crusher operate. And the funny thing was, is as we were watching it operate, one of the neighbors right beside us decided he was going to move on, and you could not hear the crusher over his weed eater, because he was moving on right next to us. So, yeah, there is a little bit of noise coming from him, but it's just kind of a low growl, but not.
It's not a sudden, it's a.
It's not a sudden loud popper.
How vast is like the dust plume coming from that thing as it's crushing?
Ideally, nothing, right? So we talked about dust, fugitive dust. So the equipment is regulated by the EPA under federal rules where it can't emit more than 20% opacity. So we do have certain staff at Clyde Companies that are certified, method nine, EPA opacity readings, where you have to go certify every six months to be able to maintain that certification. And we, on occasion, will drive through and verify that there is no fugitive emissions or it does meet the subpart triple O federal regulations that are required by that. And we also check the personnel on site so that they know what those opacity readings need to be and to make sure that those water sprays are operating when needed. If it's moist aggregate or, and make sure to turn the water sprays on so that they not exceed those opacity limitations.
So if the rock crusher's working properly, there won't be any dust emissions coming from, into the, and escaping onto his property to the north?
Right.
Even if it was crushing the rocks within 10 feet of that property, there's not going to be dust from your property going to his property? That's what, that's what you're trying to tell me?
Right.
But you're not owning it?
What I'm trying to say is it's regulated by an opacity limit, so I can guarantee that the crusher has to be less than 12% opacity. So what that means is 12% of the background will be obscured by dust. So that's what is, that's what it allowed and federally permitted to emit. So when we looked on, we pulled that slide, it was 648 pounds of.
Yep, for 150,000, 150,000 tons.
So, I mean, there is a little bit that comes out from there, but it's far less than just a regular truck driving on a road that is not maintained or not watered.
So the bigger concern is the trucks on the road rather than the crusher?
I agree. If the trucks, well, when you say trucks on the road, we are going to put down the wrap, and so that's what's going to eliminate that. So on a particular site, on a different site, farming site where they're driving up and down, they're going to put up a lot more dust just on the farm than we are on this industrial site.
So we're talking about the, the ones coming in and out of the property?
Coming in and out of the property, they'll be on a paved road.
Right.
So I, I like to think that's true. I don't know for sure whether it is or not, just for the fact that on the existing site, you get days where the wind's blowing really hard, there's no trucks coming in and out, and it's a dust storm. And that's because of the piles that you've, that you've got. I live close enough to your property to see what happens and, and to know. And so I guess my question for you guys would be, if, if, if a property owner next to you guys have a, has a concern or an issue with dust or noise or whatever, who do they reach out to?
So you can always, as a citizen, you can put a citizen's complaint to the Division of Air Quality or to you guys, however you guys would like, or to us, however you'd like to provide that citizen's complaint.
And if you get a phone call, what's the follow-up on that? What do you guys typically do?
So we'll go out and evaluate what's going on out there, verify to make sure the water sprays are working properly, verify that their equipment's maintenance is then properly maintained, just to make sure everything's operating out there as it should.
You guys ever, has Sunrock ever had any, I don't know, there'd be violations or anything from the Division of Air Quality that they've come down on you on?
I'm trying to think if we've had any recent notice of violations or an air quality permit for Sunrock Corporation.
anything from the Division of Air Quality that they've come down on you on?
I'm trying to think if we've had any recent notice of violations or an air quality permit for Sunrock Corporation. The only thing I can think of is maybe for operating, maybe a crusher wasn't permitted by.
But as far as the dust, none you can think of? Okay.
So is this ground?
I'll have to defer to that question.
Okay, let's be really clear here. Our intent is to recycle non-reinforced concrete and asphalt, okay? Not to crush aggregate, not to, to crush aggregates and soil, not to mine, not to import aggregates and then, and then crush them, but to recycle non-reinforced concrete and asphalt. So these are going to, going to have lower dust emissions, you know, by their very nature. They don't have the, the natural loose fines that are in them. We will have some small stockpiles for maybe landscape customers or, or, you know, an assortment of customers who don't want to drive to Santaquin, or to Salem, or to other places, to the gravel pits. So we'll bring in and stockpile some pea gravel, some crushed rock, some products that come from the sand and gravel pits, but they're not produced here, and they're, they're, they're not manipulated or, you know, created or, or changed or altered or, you know, dealt with in any other fashion than brought in and, and kept in, you know, reasonably small quantities. It's not cost-effective for us to have monster big piles here of, of those kind of aggregates. If you're going to have a big use for those, then, then those users are going to go to the gravel pit, or we're going to take it from the gravel pit to their site. This is going to be the, the small user, somebody who needs one load of something or a handful of loads of something. And it won't be cost-effective for them to come buy it here because it's been transported once already and handled two or three times, and it drives the cost way up. So it's a, it's a, this is a different animal.
I have a follow-up question for you.
Yeah.
Tell me your name.
Ernie Thornton, Sunrock.
Ernie, thank you. My question is, is it, give me your opinion about how reasonable or even needed a 15 or 20-foot setback from the property line of a neighbor, let's call it a 20-foot setback from the property line of a neighbor, wherein within 20 feet of the neighbor's property line, you can't crush stuff. How reasonable is that?
To, to say that that crusher couldn't sit within 20 feet?
Couldn't crush within 20 feet of the, a neighbor's property line. So already on the south side, you have a road.
Sure.
Okay, so you, you could do it on the property line, on your property line. But on the north side, you have an actual neighbor, so that you would need to stay 20 feet away from the neighbor's property line. What's your opinion on that?
So, so you saw the image of, of a portable track jaw crusher, and a number of you have seen our machine that's been over at the Santana, the old Santana Raceway property. These machines, you have a hopper on one end, crushing apparatus in the middle, and conveyors on the opposite end for the material to come out. And, and so if you position that machine too close to the property line, you can't operate it effectively because you can't.
And in this case, it'd be right next to a masonry wall, in theory?
Yeah, and, and look, this design, the, the kind of irregular footprint there is, is a possible location for that. It, it could be down here in the open area to, to the south side. It's not, I, I don't think at this juncture that we believe there's any real magic in location, Dave.
I think there's some magic. I don't want to meddle, but I'm going to go ahead and do it.
That's what I'm doing, I'm meddling.
There's a lot of space on this site, which is, again, there's a 36, I think, acre minimum property size in order for this overlay to be considered.
Yeah, we changed the ordinance from 40 to 36, correct?
Guess why?
Yeah.
I mean, again, everything's been done with this in mind, but with that much room to work with, I think, again, by intent, the concept has been that you need space to be able to provide that kind of separation and so forth. And, boy, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that in terms of a setback for the crusher itself from a property line, and obviously, we've got one dimension that's quite a bit longer than the other, we should be talking in terms of hundreds of feet, not tens.
Yeah.
The crushers are mobile, they can be moved around and so forth, but I think, you know, with the very intent that this gentleman is, is addressing, which is to limit the idea that there's going to be any impact on neighbors, I think that's very appropriate, and that's, that's part of the idea of this dialogue as well.
So Dave, real quick, Sunrock's currently been operating where they're at for years and years.
And predecessors.
And predecessors, exactly. Are you aware of, or could you count on one hand, the number of phone calls or complaints that the city's received from neighboring residents?
Valid ones, not the kind that you'd watch on Parks and Rec.
Yes, yes. And at the same time, we're aware, as they are, that there are times when there are dust storms and different things like that, that absolutely create huge messes, to where I think you could have probably 10 water trucks out on the site, and there's going to be fugitive dust.
Sure.
And frankly, I think we probably don't have complaints because that operation's been there forever. I think neighbors understand it and they accept the situation and so forth, which from my perspective is, again, something that just makes me feel more comfortable about what they're proposing to do here, because indeed, the level of improvement that will exist here to help address some of the problems that we see down there, that frankly, they don't probably get reported as often as they could, I think are going to be lessened, like I said, because of what they're doing with the site. Now, now speaking in terms of, like I say, right, we think, we're planning for, we anticipate, but at the same time, we understand that Clyde Companies as a whole, Sunrock and so forth, they know best practices, they deal with other sites in the state that are under much tighter scrutiny from neighbors and others than what this site honestly ever would be subject to. So those are all the different things that are contributing, I guess, to us feeling fairly comfortable with what's proposed. But again, the idea of, of other mitigating things like a setback, that's completely on the table.
If we did a setback, though, here, from this property, that would also exist here even though they own this property, right?
It depends on how you phrase it.
Okay.
If you want, so you could, you can articulate it however you care to.
It looks like we have another public comment.
Can I just make a comment on this? I live out there.
Real quick, let's let him finish and then.
I just got one. One final, one final concern is, is this gravel, and are the trucks going to be driving in here to load and unload? And is there any regular maintenance on the roads from, you know, 100 trucks coming in, spreading that little grit? Is there any regular sweeping or any kind of road maintenance?
We'll ask that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I just want to say that the biggest problem they're going to have is that dust is going to blow into their office building. That wind blows 95% of the time from the east to the west, and that, whatever's going to blow into their office building, on all their cars, across the street, whatever builds across there, there's not going to be any.
So north-south, not so much?
Hardly ever.
And you live in the area? What was your name, I'm sorry?
My name's Carl Blum.
Okay.
And as far as the noise goes, I don't know if you've ever been to an airport and heard a jet land?
Once or twice.
Oh, yeah. You guys have got a lot more jets coming in there now, and they're loud. I mean, 100 times louder than, than any truck that's going to make.
Thanks, Carl.
For the comment.
I think that there needs to be one point before we leave the dust situation as well, is that the, the operation that they have now out on Arrowhead Trail was a mining operation as well. Most of the stuff that you were crushing there came from on-site, which included, like you were speaking about, that it had all of the dirt, the dust, the sand, and that is a lot of sand out there, that was, that was being crushed, and that was, and it was the rock that was being crushed. If I understand, this operation, it's going to be concrete and asphalt. Concrete and asphalt don't have the same dust as a mining operation. Also, almost all of that operation that's on Arrowhead Trail is wide open, and they have very little, they have some, I guess, some hardened surfaces in there, but for the most part, it's just wide open. And so when that wind comes and it's been dry all summer, that dust is going to go all over. So the piles that are here are going to be important to neighbors about where those will go. And Mr. Blum's exactly right, the reason that the airport runway is located in that orientation is because they're taking advantage of the canyon wind. And it goes clear out to Provo, Provo's main, Provo's main, or one of the two runways is positioned exactly the same way that Spanish Fork is. And that's why it's there, that's the prevailing wind through there. And so, but as far as the dust goes, with the mitigation that they've got planned and everything else, and what little bit of raw gravel in it will go in there, I think that's what's, was another point. It doesn't make sense to bring gravel into here to be crushed. You're just handling it again, and that cuts your profit. So what they're doing is hauling stuff that has to be hauled off of a highway, or they've gone and demolished a building, or taken out a cement road. That's the kind of stuff that's going to go in here because it's, you know, they don't want to, they, you can't crush reinforced concrete with a steel bar and that, it tears the machine up. So, you know, as far as the, I think the fugitive dust is something that needs to be monitored and, and looked at all the time, and I think that they need to be responsible to the neighbors, whoever they might be. And if that's going to go, like Mr. Blum said, if that's going to go northwest, well, that's going on to the properties that they plan on selling and being part of this project. So it's a good point, and I think it's just something that they have reiterated time after time, that they're, they're planning on taking care of that. I think maybe the larger issue is the trucks on the road, you know, and that kind of stuff. But since I thought about that, as we were having the discussion on that, if I were an operator of a truck, a large truck like that, and I had to either make a wide turn and try to get on that small 800 West road, I'd go the other way on the brand-new road. You've got one, one left-hand, if you're going to come out of that area, make a right-hand turn, a right-hand turn, a right-hand turn to get on the highway. You go the other way, it's a left-hand turn, left-hand turn, and on to the highway. So it's sixes whichever way you go, really, unless, unless part of your load is going west. If your load's going to go west, if I'm a driver, I'm looking for the shortest, the shortest route, and then that's going to be right past you guys, if those truck drivers need to go that way. And, you know, I think that's a valid concern, that that is a narrow road, and it's not well-maintained. The last time it had any work done on it was there, after the floods of 83, when that road got torn up so bad it had to be rebuilt. And it was raised right along you guys' property and everything. One of the advantages to you guys will be that you'll have a, you'll have a ditch that's covered, which makes that ditch covered all the way down to you guys. At least you'll get the advantage of that and not have that great big pool in the old property, the Swenson property that they're going to be on. So that will help, but I don't know, you know, trying to get cars off of, that's another problem for you guys, if you have parking on your property, someone with a, with a trailer that comes in there to ride in the arena or whatever else has got to make that same turn, you're talking about going in and out of the, of this property. So, and you've been handling that, but the longest horse trailer that I know of isn't as long as the trucks that'll be going out, in and out here. So that's.
Anybody else from the public that has comment?
I'll make it short and sweet. Alan Blum, I'm here representing Keith Williams and the Hanson family. They have the ground directly to the west. We do have some concerns because of the high water table in that area. You can dig a hole about three, four feet down and you're hitting water, so potential runoff. Also, the dust is a concern of ours, but the noise they were talking about, they can run for up to 16 hours a day. That's eight in the mornings, it's 10 at night. The way that wind blows, if you're up towards town, you're never going to hear that, but everything downwind, you're going to hear it amplified. It's going to be louder than what the actual decimals is. And I don't know, is there regulations on decimals, decimals for outfits like this? And the Arrowhead, at one, I've seen the dust storms come up out there, but it wasn't in the wind channel like this one. This is right in the wind channel. This has been in our family for over 100 years. I grew up down there, I know what the wind is down there. And so that is a concern of ours. If, and then, can you go back to where the 77, SR 77 is? Okay. Yeah, okay, so where's the, Jared, you might want to come up here and tell me on this one. So the new road's coming up right prior to the bend, is that?
Yeah.
Now, we, we actually run livestock on our property, and we do bring semi trucks in there. And for me to make that corner on 800, you're, you're traveling the right on 77, and you're taking the whole road to make that corner, what are the improvements that's going to be made on 77? Because my concern is, you guys pull a lot of doubles, coming out on 77 to make the right-hand turn, they're going to be coming into the other lane of traffic, there's that curve coming right around there. Or if they're going to make and head west, are they going to be able to see traffic in the near future? I don't know what buildings you're going to come in, you're going to have block view right there. Why don't they move that road further to the west? And you're going to have to have some type of a wider road, because 77 flat-out won't handle a semi with doubles. We bring our 48-foot bullwagons in, we cannot make that corner now.
Is this 77? Is this one you're talking about?
77 is the main highway that goes from the.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, you're talking about this turn right here then, Alan?
Yeah, so that one in the semi is really difficult to make. Now, I understand they're going to pipe the ditch, but you're not going to be able to put the road on the ditch, correct? And that's only for half that road. That's, that's about a car and a half road. You, in a, in a truck, a half-ton truck, car, you're just pulling over, letting the other car get by. There's no way. We could get farm equipment in there with a, with a car coming, never, let alone a semi truck.
Yeah, Alan, let me just talk to that really quick. Good question, and I'm glad you brought it up, because I'm not, we didn't speak to this earlier, but two, three traffic studies have been done for, for this project. One traffic study's been done for the SSD and their operation. Another traffic study has been done for the Sunrock operation, and that's, and that traffic study was amended to produce a, a third traffic study. So what the traffic study is saying, based on the amount of vehicular and semi truck traffic, we have to have a roadway expansion, so an acceleration and deceleration lane is going to be happening here on SR 77. So this will be expanding, you have a nice shoulder here, and this will facilitate, facilitate all the semi truck traffic to come down 600 West. Now, as we, as we further develop this acceleration-deceleration lane, it will continue all the way down to 800 West. So as development continues, that UDOT will require us to bring that excel-decelane all the way down to, to bridge the gap between 800 and 600 West.
Because my concern is more on the east side, you come in, that's a dangerous corner, is it, right now?
Right, so.
You're bringing 150 trucks in.
Yeah, this is already being required by UDOT, and it will be a part of the CMGC contract.
Okay.
And the design's already being produced from UDOT.
But we're also concerned about our property. We've got the airport in our backyard right now, and it is, there's noise there, and it's going to limit us to what we can do, as far as who's going to come in and want to do something. Now, right across the street, we're going to put a rock crusher, have high-density semi parking, and it's, it's going to limit us even more to what's going to be attractive for us in future years to do with our property. If they've got that much ground, why aren't they set back in the middle of it and not coming right up to the road? I mean, there's no buffer, all we've got's a parking lot, but that parking lot's going to be full of trucks. And they can't guarantee, I mean.
What did you hope to do with the property? It's owned industrial.
Well, we'd like to do it, but when you, I mean, if you're going to come in and want to invest in property, and you're coming there and in the middle of the day and hearing a rock crusher and potential dust blowing on there.
Yeah.
Well, geez, there's other properties around, maybe I'll go look at that, so I don't have the airport in the back and this in the front. People are going to look at that, that is a concern. And then when you have limited right-of-way access, it's already, you know, you can't expand any wider because of the existing ditches and the infrastructure there, it limits you to what you can and can't do. So that is a concern.
I'm not, I'm not a prophet, but if one stitch is all in. I'm not, I'm not a prophet, but if once this is all improved, I bet your property value increases.
Get that on paper and guarantee it, you know?
No, you heard my disclaimer.
The thing is, is that there's been a lot of good questions tonight, but we're not getting a lot of good answers. I think we're trying to rush this through. Yes, to something to be done in this area, yes. Is this exactly how it needs to lay out? They can't answer a lot of the questions that have been asked. I get a lot of business cards handed to me, but that's not the answers we need tonight to be going forward with it. So I'd like it addressed better and maybe laid on the table for further day. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? All right, seeing none, we will move out of public hearing. And Dave, maybe you can answer a couple of the questions. I know one of them that came up was road maintenance, dust on the roads, potholes.
Hand it to me.
Yes.
Good move.
We haven't heard from you in a long time.
I'm not hearing you. Talk louder.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Put it right in my mouth. So all the roads you see on here are going to be a commercial collector road. So it's our widest commercial road. It's, let me pull it up here. Let's collect here, there we go. So it's 56 feet wide. The existing asphalt out there, obviously, it depends where the shoulder ends and the asphalt is in poor maintenance, it's like 27 to 30 on different spots. So this will be significantly wider road. The only reason you really do a widening of road is for turning, right? If you have just straight road with a dash line in the middle, you've got a lot of cars on that, assuming there's not a lot of turns. But once you add decel, exo lanes, left-turn lanes, that's really why roads get a lot, a lot bigger. You don't get a lot of capacity needs to, you look like Main Street where you do have to have two lanes in one way. So anyway, so that's the roadway cross-section. As far as ownership goes, it is Utah County. They would own and maintain it until there's a point where they would pass off to us as then being our road. I don't know the discussions there of where that is, but for now it would remain a county-maintained road. They're very excited at any time to give us the roads, as you can imagine. So I think it would be our road sooner than we would imagine there.
How would that change things in your view?
We'd have jurisdiction to maintain it. Our roads, we try and keep on a seven, eight-year schedule as far as maintenance goes. So keep the good roads good, but the really bad ones that we inherited of sorts, go bad and then full rebuild them at some point. So we try and keep our BNC road funds really in, paying the best spank your buck, basically. We're keeping the roads as nice as we can. So I think under our jurisdiction, it would remain a nicer facility, but it is Utah County's road at this point. As far as the dust and everything else, we do have a SWIP manager that takes complaints, talks to contractors, talks to owners of properties. He's constantly out trying to keep roads swept, keep trackout pads working. So this would be something we would obviously be aware of. We'd notify the county, we'd notify Sunrock, we've got some complaints. Can you get your sweeper out there to, to run? So have some mechanisms there that could help. Just like at South Main, if you notice all the dust plumes over there, that's obviously not the best scenario, but we're trying our best to keep it swept, keep water on the fields as they develop. There's other questions. I think Jared already answered the, for South has to be fully improved per UDOT standard, which is usually a elephant gun approach to what is really needed. So it'll be decel, accelerant lanes way really, really long for these types of trucks. So I, I've seen the plans, I'm pretty comfortable with where that's, that's landing.
Does the city own its own sweeper trucks or did you say we contract that?
We own sweepers.
How many do we have and how often?
Typically, we would have the owner of the property or the person who is at fault of sorts go and sweep it. And if not, there's ordinances and penalties that would come into play.
If it's a county road, the city's not going to use their sweeper trucks to sweep it, right?
Right.
Sunrock owns and operates a sweeper.
So you have your own.
Between Salem, Santa Fe, and.
Yeah, if you've driven on Arrowhead, I mean, I drive it fairly frequently, there's very rarely any dust on it, not advocating for it.
So you guys take care of that themselves?
I feel like theirs is one of the best maintained sites that we have.
So would you guys, you wouldn't sweep 77 because that's kind of a busier road, right? You would, you would take care of this road though?
Well, along the Egress, yeah.
And if they had trackout that came from their entrance here, by the time they get up to their building here, that's like 1,000 feet, I can't imagine there'll be much left to track at that point. If there was, I imagine they'd go a couple hundred feet and get, get a seat for them.
And just on the tracking, there are very effective things that are done onsite. Truck cleanouts, you know, wheel well washouts, different things like that. Concrete aprons, you know, wherever trucks are coming and going from, non-solid surface areas of a site to, simply I think limit the amount of material that gets tracked out on the streets. If there's material consistently getting tracked out on the streets, we have requirements, there are rules against that and so forth, that would require them to change their operation and how they work so that stops. We do not, as the city, go out and clean people's streets for them. Like I said, they have sweepers and so forth. We probably just send eventually somebody out to cite the operation in some way and that. I'm trying to think of situations where we've had that as a, as a long-term problem, where it's, well, and of course, construction's not a long-term problem, but that's, I think, probably the most effective thing is, is just limiting what's, what gets tracked out to start with, with physical operational types of things to do that.
Can I make a comment or do, are you, you're going to ask, answer more questions for us?
You know, I just, because we have a sound expert with us and this was raised, I can mention this real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
This, this means very little to me, the numbers, but sound is regulated in a couple of different ways. There's an amount of continuous sound that can be emitted. And in industrial areas, at a property line, a use, let's say a rock crusher can emit a consistent 80 decibels from the hours of 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 65 decibels otherwise throughout the rest of a day. And that's what our ordinance limit is for industrial use. And bursts and so forth for short periods of time, that can go above that 80 decibels, but that's the continuous limit that, that we have there.
Can you give me a comparison of what an 80 decibel sound?
Or compare.
65 is super quiet, just so you know, like, no one would ever complain about 65.
Or how.
80 is, you will hear 80.
You will hear 80.
You will hear 80.
Or how it would compare with how loud it is when a plane is taking off and landing.
The airport is definitely violating 80 decibels, I promise.
So like, it's like a Richter scale, right? So as you increase in number, it's exponentially going to be.
Getting louder and louder.
120 is an aircraft, 90 is a power tool, 80 is a busy restaurant, 70 is a radio, a box, I feel, conversations, and 60.
Okay. So one, one thing that when Mr. Morgan was presenting to us, I, it sounded, and maybe I misunderstood, but it sounded to me like, like you were saying that, that land acquisition was imminent on the north and on the west side, or that that's what you're interested in and that kind of stuff. But then we're having landowners come and say, we haven't even heard from you. And so maybe I'm just misunderstood you, but it would be really great if you, you know, if you approve something like this to make sure that you're being great neighbors to landowners who have been there for generations and want to continue what they're doing there. And yeah, that's my.
Nice to speak to that. I don't disagree with you at all. In fact, and I, this is the only landowner I've, we've not interacted with. And there, people are, there, people are difficult to get a hold of sometimes when it's just an LLC or something that, and so I, there hasn't been a lack of effort throughout the entire area. And, you know, unfortunately, the Shep family is, is the one property owner that we have not engaged with, but we've engaged with everyone that's within the red, that red area that we had showed originally. And we're on, we're under contract with a significant amount of property shown within that area.
Thank you.
Alan, do you guys use your property year-round?
We have livestock coming there right now.
Yeah, okay.
We grow, we grow hay on it, farm it, yeah. We cattle out in the fall.
They're pretty creative with irrigation systems too. About the only ones I know of that have an, an above-ground pipeline.
That was the airport.
That was the airports, as I thought.
I know. You got a pretty good deal there.
Can you bring up the plot map again or the map showing the usage? There were just two questions that were brought up by residents that I think we, maybe they didn't get the answer that they were seeing, maybe I just didn't hear it. One was, what will be done here, maybe two, is there going to be anything here in front of the building to offset the high-density parking is what was referred to as? And the other question was, this brown, what, what material would that be? And I believe it was that ground-up asphalt, but I, I think that the landowners were asking some of those questions that weren't answered, or at least they hadn't heard them.
So we have to follow the landscaping requirement, right? And so that's what the green indicates, that's going to be a fully landscaped area. That would be the, considered the landscape buffer between the, the right-of-way and the parking. This is not a building. The only, the only structure is here. And so this'll, this'll all be parking for the facility.
And there's a masonry wall there as well, along the frontage.
Oh, right.
Along the frontage, yeah.
Around the tri market. Not up to the frontage.
Just up to here?
Yeah, masonry wall here.
Over to here or just up to here?
I think it's just to right here and it goes down this way.
Down and wraps around.
Yeah. And again, we, we'll do what needs to be done to be compliant. And so, you know, if that, we, we just need to further these discussions with the landowner to the north and talk about, you know, what the city's going to require us to do and, you know, we'll, we'll do what's needed.
Jared, how difficult or egregious or is a 75-foot setback from, for rock-crushing activity from the, any neighbor's property? How, how hard is that?
I, I mean, I, I can't, I'm not a Sunrock.
You're not in the day-to-day operations of rock-crushing?
No. I mean, do we have, can you pull up the, do you have a Google map? Just show us what the linear feet is.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know from there.
It's 1,300 feet and it's a quarter of a mile.
Right here?
From where?
Yeah, 40 acres, 1,300 feet.
That'd be like 700 feet.
I mean, we're talking, we're, we're talking quite a bit of distance, even, even as it's, even as it's shown on the map. We're not talking, like, like Dave said, we're not talking tens of feet, we're talking hundreds of feet.
So 300, no, that's 1,000, okay.
75 foot, is that a problem?
I, I, for me, no, but I can't speak for Sunrock in their operations, but I wouldn't think.
Aren't you here to speak for Sunrock as the applicant?
Yeah, but regarding the specific operation, Ernie?
Last time Ernie was good with the 20-foot. I'm just trying to figure this out.
So, so it, it, it seems to make sense to us that, that, you know, we put, put the piles to the outside of the crusher and, and, you know, you're going to have piles that, that come in and they don't get touched by any of the crushing operation because they're coming in from a pit processed, ready to go out to, to a user. And, and to set that, that crusher pivot point up close, as close to the middle of that part of, part of the parcel makes pretty good sense to us.
For operations?
For operations. So I think, I think to think that, that we're not going to be within 75 feet is, is probably a reasonable thought.
It seems to me then that my, that line of questioning and even that condition might be superfluous because there's already a sound ordinance in place at the property line and you do, you're saying what you're saying about your operations. And I've been educated on dust creation, even watched a little video about dust, the dust, which is very minimal from what I can tell, other than when there's gale-force winds, which is going to happen here and there.
And I want, I want to let you all know that, that this facility is going to have built into it a state-of-the-art truck wash bay. Okay, so, so, you know, UPS washes their trucks every night or every morning or whatever they do. It's our intent to wash our trucks. We're going to spend a lot of money to create that component in the facility to keep our trucks particularly clean. And, and it was, as was mentioned, we own two vacuum sweeper trucks. And, and guys, this is, this is our, our home too, you know? And we want to keep it clean. We're spending millions of dollars.
It's not lost on me, that's for sure.
We, we don't want to abuse or, or mistreat our neighbors, the citizens of the city, or our home. So we're going to do it the right way.
Thank you.
Just to your question.
That was helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
That was helpful, thank you.
Thanks, Ernie.
Commissioner Ernest, to your question, and just again, back to the fundamental intent of what we're talking about tonight, it's to give the city ultimately, city council that is, with your recommendation, the ability to formulate site-specific standards to make sure that neighboring properties are impacted as little as possible. A setback for something like a rock crusher, which again, that's why we're talking tonight. If we were just talking about a trucking operation or anything like that at all, this would be an administrative approval. It would never go to the planning commission, there would never be a public hearing of any kind, and it would just be done. That is the, that's what's triggering this.
So you like my rock-crushing setback idea?
Well, just to try to provide a little bit more scale to it, if for the area that they showed in tan on the image that we saw earlier.
Pretty much everything in this corner, in this square.
Right, half of the property. If there were a 100-foot setback from each property line for a rock crusher, they would still have more than 400 feet of width and 1,100 feet of property depth that they could put a crusher in.
And I wouldn't even do it from their own property line, I would do it from a neighbor's property line because I would, I would give them the benefit of a road.
Of the east.
Yeah, or the road to the south.
I mean, I'm just thinking for the scale, so, and I'm trying to pull maybe some folks along here a little bit, but that sure seems like that's, that's still very accommodating of what they want to do. And I think that is very important to be mindful of the neighbor's concerns and so forth. And just maybe to touch on a couple of those in a little different respect, and I appreciated the description that Mr. Morgan gave, but really the intent along the public street on the west side of property has been to provide a significant buffer and screen and so forth. 96 feet of landscaping there, and we haven't necessarily gone through the landscaping plan tonight.
I was going to ask, have you guys seen that?
But it's not just, it's not just grass.
That's what I was going to ask.
It's in the plants, yeah.
I really appreciate the, the robust plan to do very heavy landscaping along that western side, which is partly why, again, I said what I said in the beginning. I do think that this project, at the end of the day, is going to be very attractive from that public right-of-way to that side. Frankly, the south side probably will be the least attractive, you know, aspect from a, a public right-of-way, but I know what we have at the south side and I don't think we're all that concerned about it. You know, albeit the veterinary clinic is there and so forth, but this, this is not typically what we see for industrial projects, this, this type of landscaping proposal.
Any more public comments?
Could I add one more thing? What was the original reason to move it to the west? Why don't they move it back to the east of 40? Then it'd give a buffer. They wouldn't have a buffer. They would have a neighbor on the north, and then we'd have a buffer on the west.
For now, until something else came in there, right?
Well, as I say, what was the reason to move it to the west anyways?
Jared, you want to...
The wind. The wind's not blowing the... To affect anything coming in. I just...
You have 80 acres to sell.
So, initially, you've got your 80 acres. You're going to put it on the south 40. You've now purchased this piece of property. His question is, why did you change your mind on this one?
Yeah, and it's a valid question. And, you know, we... The reason is simple. We need... An 80-acre pad is so much more attractive for a large-scale industrial user than a 40-acre pad. And so...
You didn't need the entire 80 acres for what you've got, so...
Correct. And so, Sunrock needed 40 acres to operate. That allowed us to open up a super pad, an 80-acre super pad, which is, you know... That is the reasoning behind it.
For future development.
That being said, then, you still own all of this.
It's because they own 80 acres, don't they?
So... Why not use the north property? Or is there... Is it land reasons? I know there's wetlands and some other things in that area.
Marketability of...
No, it doesn't have to do with wetlands. It is marketability-driven, and we're already under contract with the developer for all of it.
Or all of this.
Yep.
They're going closer to the airport.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're moving closer to the airport. It is unfortunate, but overall, this use is getting closer to another use that is the airport.
Not enjoyable. What else was there?
Any more public comments?
A lot of good comments. Anything that the public brought up that we didn't address?
Are there any more public comments?
We closed public comment.
One was storm drain, how it would be handled on the site. They had a retention or detention basin on the north end, and then they're piping it to the north. We're still working out details on how it'll exactly lay out, but it'll go north to the corner and then east. But it'll all be piped off-site and maintained and handled, just like other sites in Spanish.
Alan, one thing that you brought up, and I don't know if it was made clear or not, but just to make sure you're aware. It sounds like with the truck parking, there's going to be a wall, six-foot wall all the way around it. So, in all reality, yeah, there'll be trucks there, but they're not going to be visible with the wall.
I just, if they're industrial, I'd like to see a 40-acre industrial buffer. Let them gamble the dust. Well, on their own stuff, what they're going to try to do, except one hour.
Understood.
That's my biggest thing.
Yeah, no.
Let them have their own noise.
It's understood. To be honest, though, if it were here, instead of here, don't know that that would make a lot of difference.
I know, but you've got tens of millions of dollars tied into a nice airport facility, and you're putting a potential dust hazard right kitty-corner to the approaching... That don't make any sense to me. We've done studies down in Phoenix, Arizona, as long as those airports where the dust storms arise. And you go backward, and small jet engines and smaller aircraft don't do well with dust. So, why would you put a potential hazard right on your approach and takeoff?
Good question. I obviously am not an expert. I would assume the city has done their homework on that.
Sunrock has to keep the dust on their property. That's part of the deal. So, we're talking about...
But at the same time, we've heard that you get a storm, and it's inevitable.
Well, if the winds are that bad, will the planes be flying?
Well, and is there dirt already there now that's kicking up dust?
It's all grass, I'm sure. There's no open ground. It's all contained.
Good to know.
The city staff reached out to the airport, or has there been any concerns that way?
You know, we operate the airport, and the public works director is ultimately responsible for the airport operations, in all honesty. This is the kind of use that we want in close proximity to the airport, because these folks aren't going to complain about airport noise and different things like that, which is probably the biggest threat to a general aviation airport that you have. So, we'd be concerned probably about other uses that would be more sensitive to proximity to the airport. And what happens there, what's going to continue to happen, probably even at higher levels than what we've seen in the past. It's definitely a growing facility. So, that's been staff's perspective, including those that are involved in managing the airport.
Did we decide on a setback, what we thought a setback should be?
I'm good with 100 feet. I'm just sensitive, because I'm a firm believer in property rights for all the property owners. And I think, at a very fundamental level, it's our job to weigh, how will this use affect the neighbors? And what is the current zoning and currently-approved uses? And is there an appropriate way to mitigate and protect each landowner, including Sunrock? And I think, in this case, the EPA and the Division of Air Quality... If the neighbor complains about the dust, they are going to come in and hammer down on the property owner, who has to, by law, keep the dust on their own property. Already, the law is on the neighbor's side to keep the dust on Sunrock's property. It's next to an airport. Industrial uses on the neighbor's property that are permitted today and allowed are commercial kennels, animal shelters, drive-in theaters, jails, outdoor commercial recreation facilities, rehabilitation treatment facilities, shelter care facilities, telecommunication towers taller than 60 feet, outdoor storage areas, sexually-oriented businesses, seasonal sales and special events, trade or business schools, trucking and warehousing, veterinary offices, tele... Again, telecommunication, tire care centers, retail businesses, outdoor display areas. These are permitted. These are allowed on the neighbor's properties. And at this point, yeah, I think I'm inclined... I want to recommend approval, and I'm okay having a 100-foot setback from any neighboring property line for crushing stuff as an additional condition. That's where I'm at.
Just make sure it says crushing stuff.
Crushing stuff.
So...
My biggest concern is the trucks coming in and out. And because I feel satisfied for what Sunrock has said about the mitigation, the dust mitigation that they work so hard for and designed this for this kind of site. But it just sounds like if they're... And it sounds like they're committed to signage and educating their trucks that are coming in and out about the most appropriate way to come in and out of the site. And then, I'm fine with that, too.
It's a big thing. In fact, it's a public road. There's not a lot you can do as far as restriction, because it's public. That's hard. I assume, Jared, that there will be a survey of the property lines done before any construction or anything's taken care of. I know that was brought up. All of that will be figured out prior to anything moving forward?
Yes.
Just wanted to address that, make sure that question was answered. That was one I think we missed. As far as the setbacks go, to be honest with you, and I'm fine if you want to put setback requirements in there, that's fine. But honestly, there's going to be either a berm or a wall around...
A masonry wall, six-foot.
Around where they're doing this. If somebody's on the outside, they're not going to know if that crusher's 100 feet from the property line or 75 feet from the property line. I mean, realistically, yeah, it's nice to have distance there, but to actually put a number on it, I don't know.
I think Ernie made a very good point that with a crusher, you've got to have room all the way around it. You've got to have room to feed it. You've got to have room to get the material out to a place where it can be piled and then moved. And so, I can't imagine that 100 feet would be about the minimum. You know, I mean, you can't move much closer to a property line than that, because you can't operate around it. It wouldn't be efficient for them.
For me, it's just adding one more thing, that who's going to regulate that? Who's going to go out with a tape measure and see is it a certain distance away? I mean, the concept, the idea is good.
The neighbor might.
The neighbor might.
They might, but I agree.
And I'm good with that.
Based on what we saw with their plans, it looks like they're trying to centralize it as much as possible anyways. So... But it doesn't hurt if you want to add it.
Are there future possibilities for abuse for this new overlay, is the question?
I think this has been designed specifically for what we're talking about tonight. I agree.
And if another property qualifies, then we evaluate that, you know, for that site's merits and needs and that type of thing. That's the idea.
Yeah.
Who are this site?
Okay.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
If comments are done, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that this committee recommend to the City Council. They propose zone change, and along with the following conditions and findings that have been recommended by staff.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Let's do roll call vote for this one. Commissioner Ernest?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendenhoe?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Carden?
Aye.
And Commissioner Warning?
Aye.
So, this goes to the City Council. I assume it'll be at their next meeting. So, just because we recommend it doesn't mean it's been approved. So, there's still plenty of time for questions, to approach City Council and ask them things. Do we know when that meeting will be?
That's two weeks from last night, the 16th of March. That'll start at 6 o'clock. Public hearing again with them that night.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input. I know things don't always go exactly how we want. We try and listen to everybody and do things the best we can, so thank you.
We hope it works out just right for everybody.
All right, where's my agenda? Okay, moving on. We... Next agenda item is Fieldstone, 11,000 South, 3,400 East.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I don't want the applicants for the next two items necessarily to feel short-changed, but their proposals are consistent with the general plan and that they would like their properties zoned R115. We've talked quite a bit about the zoning of these properties in the past. So, I'm just going to simply say that staff recommends that the proposals being made by both Fieldstone Homes and D.R. Horton Homes, that's the next item, separate item entirely, but the request is similar, that they be approved.
Any questions for Dave?
Actually, really hard ones for the applicant? No, I don't.
Okay, is the applicant here, and do they have anything to share?
Hi, I'm a trainer with Fieldstone Homes. It's a good conversation. So, we're saving all our rock-crushing for the middle lot.
Any resident complaint?
It's the right thing to say. It's the right thing to say.
I have a question, Mr.... Some of the public comments had a rock crusher on the back of his shirt.
Did he really?
And he was against it? And he was against it, and he had a rock crusher?
Yeah, public commenter.
The neighbor's against it, guy?
That's awesome.
So, sorry, off-topic, interesting. We can't go back to that one. We're on to the next one. Now, this one is hopefully super simple for you guys. And we've met with staff and worked with DRC, and gone through some different zoning options on this. And I think you guys would be with R115 for this 27 acres and...
Microphone, sorry.
Oh, right. So...
You're on TV.
I'm on TV. Awesome. Going for the, yeah, R115 zone is the request. And with our current preliminary layout, I mean, we're estimating about 2.1 units per acre a little below what a typical R115 is in your guys' table. Happy to answer your questions and talk about the project, you know, with any questions that you have, but keep it simple and keep this meeting moving for everybody.
Thank you. I have a question for staff, but not you.
I have one.
And I live in a Fieldstone home, and I enjoy it. So, thank you for building a great Fieldstone home.
And I will have one comment about Fieldstone, is that you've been in front of this commission several times with some other plans. And I appreciate you listening to our concerns and what you've come up with now. Pretty much meets what we've been talking about all the time. And I appreciate that, that Fieldstone has taken that under consideration and modified your plans. And I appreciate that. I think it looks good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I may be missing a part.
There's our friend in the back. Thank you.
But why not this triangle right here? Is that owned by the other property owner?
It's owned by, I believe, the power company.
Why aren't you taking this across the finish line? What's going on? Trainee?
Too much to talk about, and I didn't have a crusher shirt, so...
Great answer.
Yeah, so there's a power...
Power, okay.
Power... Look up there.
If you can get us that land, we'll build homes on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more questions?
I have a question for staff. Wait, is this a public comment?
It is. Do that first?
Sure.
All right. Zone change, so this is public hearing. So, at this time, we will move into public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the Fieldstone agenda item? Go ahead. Again, your name and...
So, I'm Rick Giles. I own three parcels down from here.
Which ones?
Right there. Right there. So, you guys have us zoned for half-acre, future half-acre. We're still in the county, obviously. What is the chances of getting the same zoning? Is the sewer going to have enough? Is the line going to be big enough to rezone us? Because obviously, we've got the tracks. We've got the power lines in front of us. It's not a real... It's not real attractive for people that wants a half-acre lot. And there's very few in Spanish work in the newer developments. That's my biggest concern.
Staff question. You don't want to meet with Dave.
So, when we close public hearing, we didn't do this last time, and I should have. I apologize. But we're going to listen to your comments, write down your questions. Then, when we close public hearing, we'll answer all your questions and bring staff involved.
And the other concern is, with all this going in, I know the other end of the road is going to still be county, but I would love to request the speed limit dropped down to a residential's speed limit, which is 25 instead of 40. Because this is going to bring a ton of traffic to our road, and it's a very narrow...
On 2,400 East? I just want to make sure I understand.
And it's a very narrow road now.
People fly down that road. I ride my bike on that road, and it's a little scary.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will move out of public hearing. So, Michael, I don't know if you want to bring up the general plan for his property, and we can address that question.
Utilities can be handled offline.
I agree, it's fun. Utilities are really easy. So, we're running utilities up the road. I say "we," I'm not personally, but the city, a couple developers are running utilities up this road. So, sewer, water, pressurization, power, there'll be utilities on that road. Plenty of capacity at size for the whole area with the zoning, with the general plan that's in place. So, no utility concerns there from us. As far as the road goes, we can talk about the speed limit. It is a county road, so it is their speed limit. When it is in the city, I can't imagine it will be like 25. I think it's going to be a collector road, so it's going to be a decent-sized road, shoulders for people to pull off on. I can't imagine it'll be 30 or 35, would be my guess. But it will be done by a study.
Still have one down on Mason Mount and 25.
So, Mason Mount makes 35 now.
They just increased it.
And that was done through an engineering study for ASHDO guidelines, FHWA and a couple others. So, it's a very big deal to mess with speed limits, especially, obviously, raising them. And so, it goes to City Council. Like, it's discussed very heavily, and there has to be a lot of data supporting it, so... It won't be 40, I would imagine, but it probably won't be 25 either. Again, when it is, our road... Again, when it is our road to actually dictate what the speed limit is.
So you can dictate it on the one end and not the other end? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, when it's in our, I am recording with the county. We don't want it to jump and jump back and jump and jump back. But we'd work with Richard Nielsen and work out a speed limit. But I imagine we could work with them on 40 to come down, but it's definitely not going to be 25. People will go to the comfort they feel going.
Will you pull?
Regardless of what the speed limit says.
Will you pull up the general plan to see what Mr. Giles' property is, is planned for?
Estate density residential?
The same.
So it's the same as, it's the same density as what it, as what the plan is for it to become as for what Fieldstone is proposing right now.
Oh, okay. So they changed that since I planned. Coming last, that was 10 years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Yours is this one right here?
And you say that's not prime area, but you wouldn't believe what people are willing to, where they, it's a high demand area.
Even though you've got the railroad behind you, it doesn't matter. They're still building and people are still buying. So this is current city boundary. Is that correct? Okay. Any other questions?
Question for staff. Do we?
Answer all of yours.
You got the road and the utilities.
Looking to annex the little island or?
City doesn't, city's not in the business of annexing. Usually they wait till a property owner approaches the city and says they'd like to be a part of the city. Then usually, from what I've seen in the past, the city will say, get your neighbors involved. And if a large enough group of them are interested in annexing, then they start the process. Did I answer that right?
That is spot on, but just to mention this in case it's helpful for Mr. Giles. We just met yesterday with the property owner that's adjacent to the city boundary right here. Like Bart Bogus is his name. I can't remember the name of the property. I want to say it's BB and T or something like that. I think they are starting the, the process to annex. And we would certainly prefer doing one annexation in the area as to two or three or anything like that. So if you'd like us to maybe connect you with those folks to see about just doing an expanded annexation for the type of development that we're talking about in the area and the plans that are already in, in place relative to infrastructure, you know, what Mr. Clark described. I think annexation should be really easy. I hate to say slam dunk, but I think all of the things that might be concerned for us to recommend that annexation be approved and addressed already. So it should be easy if you want to do that sooner than later.
Joseph, did you have?
Yeah, do we, in the master plan development amendment, are we at the point where we've only formally initiated the change? Or have we, I can't remember if we've recommended approval. It's done? Okay, cool. That was it?
Anything else? Any other?
Just a question, a curiosity of Fieldstone.
Public hearing is closed.
How many units in each area?
15,000 square feet per, per lot is the, is the zoning that they're, they're going for.
Do you remember what DB Martin was?
I haven't seen a site plan.
550, let's say, and that's on the high side.
On both?
No, that's on.
Between the two.
Oh, between the two.
You guys are 50-ish. Yeah, so 550 give or, and that ties from actually more like 530, let's say to be.
So 530 units combined in both?
Yes, yeah.
I'm just trying to imagine traffic.
And that's rough. Because there'll be roads through it and that'll take up development.
You know, in a lot of ways, you say, oh, they're just going to go out to the collector to Highway 6, but there also be a go down to Holiday Oil on 7200 South. You know, so we got other residences, a business that along that stretch. So those are just, I'm just out of curiosity what to be looking for, so.
That's good. And food for thought, as it's developed, the road widths are dictated by the city and the developer pays for those to make sure it's adequate for the traffic.
Gotcha.
Just FYI, yeah.
So, so follow up to that, will they also be looking at doing 7200 South? I mean, because you'd be doing that 3200 East, but you're going to be having a lot of traffic heading west?
That's in the county.
Yeah, you will. Does that make sense?
Yeah, eventually that would be part of it, as long as it gets annexed into the city and there's a developer that proposes to develop it, the city. Exactly. You got it. That has frontage to it.
And your lower density is closer to the road that cuts through to the Holiday Oil. Your higher density is right there next to the highway. So even if they're going to Holiday, they'll probably cut over, in many cases, cut over and turn right onto the highway and then go into the Holiday Oil.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Holiday Oil is banking on it.
People's patterns are.
It's true. It's true.
Because the other thing you have to look at is you've got 35 homes on the other side of Highway 89 where they're doing the groundwork right now, 65, I'm sorry. 65 units are approved. They'll definitely go down 7200 to access Holiday, Walmart, all that sort of area. They won't be going over to Highway 6. So that 7200 South road will become a thoroughfare without any improvements or developments on 7200.
Unless they're, until they're developed or unless they're developed.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it could be in a state now, but you're going to find a, an increased amount of traffic.
Right.
But right now.
And that connection on 6 is not great.
Right now.
It's not great. And the road's not that great.
Connection for that, is that right? This is the only place where it crosses the railroad?
Right. They'll, they'll hit that and then go on to 7200, right, and head west towards Holiday and Walmart and all those businesses. So that Mapleton traffic is going to pick up significantly into 7200. And there won't be any need to, I mean, there won't be any development going on anytime soon, right? So.
So what's the concern with the narrow roads? I guess, what would your?
No, I'm just talking about the amount of traffic and speed limit. I'm not proposing anything. I'm just painting a picture because Mapleton's right next door and they're lost.
I don't think so. It'll be Mapleton.
Highway 89. So we're talking about like the Spanish Fork piece, but there's that significant Mapleton piece that will come in through.
So the reason I ask, because there's highways all over the United States that are similar to this. It's two lane road, right? There's one direction, one the other. Might be a hair wider. The only reason we widen roads is again, like I said previously, since for turns until it gets to a main street where you do need two lanes in each direction or something. So even driving to St. George, you see a lot of two lane type roads, right? That are all over, that have lots of traffic, lots of people going. But it's really an A to B until the properties develop on either side and give someone a reason to turn.
Well, yeah.
It's really just a thoroughfare from A to B. And so that's why we don't try and raise property taxes to build roads. Clear in advance is until there's a real traffic need and a developer's causing that need to, you know, turn or anything else, the city's not in the business of building new roads, right? We, we evaluate and we try and make it sensible development, but same time, we aren't going to go build like Las Vegas uses gambling money to do and build these five lane highways way in advance of any house that's being built.
So there, it is in the plans to have a light right here, is that right?
Yeah, at some point. That would be UDOT, right? Yeah, and it'd come, it'd go straight through.
And cross the tracks right here. And then the road will go across to Cannon Road and this'll, this'll be taken out.
This'll go.
This'll go away, yeah. And then this one will go through.
No.
Well, oh, here. Oh, right there. Okay.
So another thing we do as well, just more for residents question here is we do have a transportation master plan that models all developments based on the zoning that we have and general plan that we have. And then it dictates what size of road to build. And then if there is a road that's pretty unique, we do have funding sources to go out and try and get that. This isn't one that we, we would be eligible to receive funding for, like they would deny a request if we asked for it. So the only other funding source is either a developer or a property tax, something or other. And so this section of town isn't one that we've seen that need come to the top, so.
Thank you.
We're, we're supposed to have you come and introduce yourself.
You want me to?
Sure.
Just.
So John Stewart, I, I actually live across the road from Rick Giles on a 40 acre piece of property. So it belongs to the family trust. And I also, interesting enough, work right next door at the new Haven, the girls' school.
Okay.
So I'm just monitoring all the developments, all the traffic, all those kind of things. And they're, you know, they're significant impact and so just for personal and business, just taking a look at where this is going and what we need to be prepared for. So thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to take over your job.
If there is no additional comment, someone appears to be ready to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Commissioner.
Okay.
That the planning commission recommends the proposed zone change be recommended for approval to city council with the conditions as found and written by staff.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
John, what are you doing? What's going on, John?
Just keeping an eye on me.
How many is a quorum?
We're good.
We're good?
Yep. All right. Next agenda item is Quiet Valley. Proposal involves changing the zone. Again, same situation from RR to R115.
The property with this proposal is adjacent to what you just made a recommendation on to the south. Staff's recommendation is the same. It consists with the general plan as big as it could be approved.
What was, what were the changes? You sent us changes, but it would be nice to say here were some.
Do you want to go through the preliminary plot proposal now as well, or do you want to?
Is that going to come up later today or is that for a future meeting?
Yeah.
It's tonight?
There's not a public hearing with that.
But it will be later?
Let's leave this one with the public hearing and do them separate if that's all right. Just hurry and crank through this one and then we'll get to that one. So this one's pretty, pretty obvious. I think we discussed it in our meeting last week. Same, same situation. It's, meets the general plan, what we've been talking about, what we want there. Anybody have any questions before we?
Public hearing?
Move into public hearings? Okay, we'll move into public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to address this zone change? Seeing none, we will move out of public hearing. Any comments or questions, any concerns with this one? If not, I would recommend a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city council the proposed zone change for Quiet Valley.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are our public hearing items. Moving on. Yeah. Appreciate the input, so thank you. Moving on to preliminary plat, looks like we've got the Sunrock Industrial first.
Yes, the easy one relative to Sunrock. And this really, as I see it, amounts to what sometimes we call, this would be the first step to doing a road dedication plot. There are already two distinct properties here. When everything's done, there will still be two properties here. It's not like we're creating a new parcel. But the proposal would pave the way for additional right of way along this road to the west to be dedicated to the city. It would dedicate right of way for the, yet to be constructed at all road to the south, the new road. Once again, thanks. So road dedication on the west side, south side, east side, that's, that's more than anything what this amounts to. And as much as it's that simple, staff recommends that it be approved.
Just one question. We talked a whole lot about this road on the west side. So they, the improvements only will happen along the part that's there, along their property line. This is where the road improvement will be, so not this section.
That is how the site plan for Sunrock's operation was approved, exactly. It would just be their frontage that would be improved at this point in time.
Is planning commissioner recommending body for plats or are we final? Aren't we the land use authority for plats?
Thanks for bringing that up. In this case, where this isn't a master plan development, the planning commission won't be making a recommendation. You'd be either approving or denying the proposal.
Is the same true for Quiet Valley?
That is a master plan development, so no.
No, got it, okay.
Thanks for asking that. So a little different motion on this one than sometimes we make.
Any additional questions for this? I think we kind of hashed it out earlier tonight.
Hours ago. Jesse, you want to make the motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve Sunrock Industrial preliminary, or preliminary plat.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Okay, the next preliminary plat, Quiet Valley, which was just mentioned, the master plan, so this is a recommendation.
Yes, thank you. And I really appreciate the opportunity that we had last week in a work session to discuss a lot of things about this proposal. In terms of the scale of this proposal, it ranks right up there, near the top of the list of the value projects that have ever been approved in Spanish Fork, ever been presented in Spanish Fork. The applicants are here tonight and there have been some changes made from what we talked about last week. We reviewed those this morning in our development review committee meeting. And the development review committee did make a recommendation to approve the proposed preliminary plat as a master plan development, subject to those 10 conditions that are spelled out. And I think this might be version three, the latest staff report that you have. And if any of you guys have questions about any of those particular things, we'd be happy to answer those. I certainly feel like I've had more than my share of airtime tonight, so I'm almost wanting to turn things over to the applicant. I'm not almost, no. I really want to let the applicant maybe describe their project and at the same time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have made.
Yeah, let's have the applicant come on. Mainly just address, I guess, the changes between what we saw last week and what you've got tonight.
Good evening. Nice to see you again. Adam Loser from D.R. Horton. You warned me that one of the gentlemen that was missing was going to be really rough. And I'm glad that he's still here and that he can, I can field all of his questions.
The new guy?
Yeah. And I see Mr. Ernest has left us as well, so that's great.
He's back.
Cue. He's back. I've got, I've got the updated plan and it might be helpful to show that. Do you have the one that we presented this morning in DRC? Is that one on, is it?
Yeah.
Yep.
The land should be attached to the boardrooms?
It, yeah.
This one, yeah? Some of those are out there. Yeah, so I think, I think we're, we're going to make some changes there and you thought that was at staff level. But the ones that we wanted to address were the concerns on the parking that backed up to the pump track. So specifically, your suggestions last week, we widened the alleys to 20 feet and all the driveways to 20 feet, where before it was 18, 18, 18. Now it's 20, 20, 20.
You listened and you acted.
We listened and obeyed, yes.
Fantastic.
And then before, let's see, this still works. Maybe, yeah, there we go. So before, these alleyways came in and circled around. And there was some concern about having the public come and park on those. The recommendation was made to just dead end these and have front end parking. So we actually picked up, you know, a dozen parking spots by replicating that on each of these, just having it be dead end. And we thought that that too would limit people's trying to, trying to come in and connect these two roads and get access to this area. This would just serve more as a dead end parking for that cul-de-sac, if you will, that alleyway. So those were the main, the main changes that we made. We've got to rework the road down here so we can get over some, some UDOT issues, but, but that was suggested. That's just a staff approval, so.
Did you make any changes as far as the property sizes to the north end of the property being larger or smaller?
Nope, they're consistent with our original submittal.
They added a lot of parking, it seems.
That's correct.
Yeah, I should get, we'll get credit for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm giving it to you. Good job.
So we, let's see here.
Try this one.
Thanks. So, we added, we added some parking stalls down here, we added these parking stalls here, we added these parking stalls here, I think we squeezed some in over here or over here too. But yes, we added, we added a bunch more.
That's awesome.
We just know that that's, that's a hot point, and so that was something we were intending to do anyway, we just hadn't gone through the exercise, but after last week in our meeting with staff on that Thursday, we added a bunch more.
Yeah, that's great.
So, I think with the change that we are going to make to this road, we'll shift it, you know, 80 or 100 feet this way to, to come in this connection. And so, rather than have these units, front door spacing, they'll be similar to these where you've got side facing out to 3200 West.
Does that reduce the number at all?
No, they'll carry consistent.
What's your distance from where that comes out and where the, where the railroad crossing is? Any idea?
Brian, we like...
It's currently about 2, I want to say 230, 240, and we're going to shift it another 100 feet, so it'll be 3, 3 inches.
Okay, even better.
Not to interrupt, but parking went from 69 guest stalls to 111.
That's...
That's a solid interruption.
That's great, yeah, that's a good number.
I think one of the questions that was asked last week too was the overall density that's approved, you know, there's some concern, are we exceeding the density between the, what has now been recommended as the R15 zone, right, and then the R3? And as we ran the calc, we're over 100 units underneath what the threshold could be. And so, I'd love to be ascending site for some TDRs on the far west side, but I know I'm not a ascending site.
Can always hope and pray.
I guess we still have to finalize the development agreement, right? He's never going to let.
I would be disappointed if he did.
Any, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you for what you've done, that's...
I liked it before, and I like it better now.
Great.
So, do we wait and see what we come up with next time?
Would you like to be a founder's buyer?
Did you hear that? That was good, actually.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We wait and see what we come up with next time?
No, I think we're ready to go. I think Mike would appreciate that.
Yeah, no, this is going to be a very nice development for that area of the city, so we're excited.
You ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
I, Jesse, you want to do this one?
You got it.
Okay, then. I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the preliminary plat, the Quiet Valley preliminary plat, with the conditions, with staff's conditions incorporated into it.
Got a motion?
I'll second it.
And I've got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did we just approve that?
We recommended that it be approved.
Because it's a master plan development, we are a recommending body.
So, City Council will approve that in a couple of weeks, or have the opportunity to. Great, all right, next agenda item, or do we need a five-minute recess?
Wait, I think that was it, adjourn.
Not quite.
We're so close. Push through.
You know it's long, right?
No.
Yeah, anybody need just a quick break?
Did you say there's other business?
There is, yeah.
Okay.
You want a recess? Okay, five-minute recess. Take just a quick break. Okay, next agenda item, number four, project signage plan, is that where we're going?
It is, and I think the best way to provide some context on this is to refer back to what was reviewed a month ago, with the project signage plan for Canyon Creek. Jesse, you weren't here, obviously, but for Shauna and Kevin, remember that, we're talking about?
Yes.
The nature of the Canyon Creek development, and how much of the signage that they have today that's existing, and there's certainly a lot of additional signs that are approved to be constructed in the project, they don't meet the city's typical requirements for signage. Most of the time, it's a height issue, I think for a couple of them, in addition to allowing for signs that are taller than what the code would otherwise permit, it's a matter of copy area, and having signs maybe more frequently than what the code otherwise would allow. And I think, just speaking for myself, given now we're five or six years into the program that we have with Canyon Creek, I think it's working really well, and we appreciate how things have unfolded. This particular proposal is on your agenda tonight, as IHC, we understand how it's been represented to us as a co-developer of the Canyon Creek development, in fact, some of the signs that are included in the package that the council approved after you recommended that it be approved last month around property that's owned by IHC. In this particular case, the proposal involves locating a monument sign on the corner of Canyon Creek Parkway and Marketplace Drive. So, signalized intersection there, a really prominent intersection, absolutely the place that you would think, expect to see a big sign. As I mentioned earlier, however, our ordinance does not allow, for example, for monument signs that are any taller than six feet, unless they're part of an approved project signage plan. So, this is before you tonight, as what we, I think, and we're kind of operating on the fly here a little bit, we received this application yesterday, hence it being added to your agenda yesterday. But we would simply view this as an amendment to the project signage plan that Woodbury had approved just last month. And, inasmuch as it would be included in kind of that overall signage approach, we also would recommend with the approval of this sign, that it be modified in some way to have some visual connection to the types of signs that Woodbury is building throughout the development. It wouldn't be the first time that a sign has been modified in some way, in form, to the overall kind of signage theme and so forth, that has been put forth for Canyon Creek. And at the same time, just in my opinion, I don't think that a lot would need to be changed, potentially about the sign to somehow aesthetically connect with what's been approved in Canyon Creek, if we can pull up that, that signage plan, that's helpful to reference just to review, kind of look and feel of those signs. A lot of times with, with monument signs, for example, you'll see a material around the base, there's almost a branded type of rock that is being used in Canyon Creek, that in my view would be a fairly simple add to the sign that would, in one way, be a really insignificant connection, but yet it's something, it's something that would, again, tie in with the overall signage for the development. And I think that indeed would be my recommendation. The other thing, yeah, can you maybe help her in? The other thing that I want to mention relative to signs on IHC's property, if you guys have been out and you've driven around Marketplace Drive, you'll see a couple of signs that I think are a little bit smaller than what's being proposed tonight, that were approved, we should permits for them, and they've been constructed, or they don't have any connections at all to the overall kind of package or theme for the Canyon Creek development, they also exceed our requirements, those were approved about a year ago, and they shouldn't have been, they shouldn't have been without going through this process. That is 100% my fault. Should have come then, should have gone through this, we didn't. But nonetheless, with this last, I think, sign, at least that we're aware of, that they're proposing to build, we certainly recommend that the plan be approved as an amendment to the overall package, simply with the condition that they put forth something to make them visually connect with, kind of the style of thing that we're seeing here.
So, the pictures that we're looking at on the, from, on board docs about what the, what they're proposed, we are just asking, we would, you're saying that it would be appropriate for us to ask them to modify the signs that we're looking at here to blend with the Canyon Creek theme?
We think that's important, we've talked with the folks at Woodbury, they think that's important, they're happy to be a part of the dialogue, again, they're the co-developer of Canyon Creek with IHC. We, in fact, probably would have preferred that there would have been dialogue with them earlier. And as much as we understand that IHC plans to open the facility next month, obviously we're trying to, we're trying to move quick, so as to make sure that, you know, if they want to have this sign constructed when they open, and it's a really prominent location, that can happen. And I think there are a lot of different ways that you could do something with what they'd like to build, you know, without changing its form en masse, and maybe if they manufacture it and still have it in some way, shape, or form.
Well, and they've got white down at the bottom of the sign, that they could use, that they could add some of this rock.
Has there been any reservation from IHC, or is there any discussion at all been about this?
I get the sense that yes, given this is what we received yesterday, I kind of thought that the, the package we would give it would have been something that's somehow connected with, with what we're seeing here.
Is anybody from IHC here tonight? Okay.
You guys IG signs?
Any other questions for Dave? Why don't we have, if it's all right, you guys come up and, and tell us what your plans are, what your thoughts are based on what you've heard tonight, is what we're seeing, and maybe you don't see what we can see. What are your, what are your plans with the signage that you've got?
This is on. Adam Jensen with Intermountain Healthcare, and appreciate your time tonight. You know, I was going to say, first of it, or first the worst, second the same, you know the rest. Yeah, signage is very important at Intermountain Healthcare, and I think one of the things that we would express significant with that is our brand. It's important for us to maintain our brand that's recognizable to the community, and so it can aid in wayfinding, as well as critical access for emergent care. And being able to have that clearly defined, as we have on multiple facilities throughout the state, that is a clear indication for us to have something that's consistent, that's recognizable, and has been said. And so, for us to revise that would take quite a bit of action on our side, and, and I guess we'd have to have some discussion further to understand, to what extent does that need to tie in. So, I think we're open to the dialogue, but I think we also need to understand that Intermountain, as, as a corporation, does have defined standards and a defined brand, and these signs have been implemented based upon those, that same structure and strategy.
How much, how much variance is there between signage at different hospitals?
Not very much, there, we have multiple different sign packages, so that the one that's under discussion, we, we classify as a pylon sign, which is a large demarcation of the campus.
Is that?
Yes, that would be one of our pylon signs.
Okay.
Our directional signs are probably the other signs that you've seen there, they're a little bit lower in size, but very similar in shape, so they are a very vertical sign. And then our, our other type of, I'm sure, sign would be our monument sign, which is a lower sign, that's also an indicator of the site. Now, this one in particular has some pretty important pieces to it, which is, we are at a very prominent intersection, and we do want to make sure that there's community benefit to the LED sign for the community efforts Intermountain does, as well as the indication of the campus, but probably most important is the indication of emergency, and the directional language, having that read, having that very bold.
Is that always at the bottom of your signs?
It is.
Okay.
There are a few situations in which that's been raised up, but very rarely.
Typically, it's at the bottom.
And, and the reason behind that is because it's at eye level, where people are looking as they drive, so that we're not forcing people to look elsewhere and cause other potential issues.
So, the, this is facing, this is on a corner facing out, so, so you've not got the LED on both sides of the sign?
Correct, it's, it's just on the prominent side, so heading, I guess, in, in that way, it'd be northeast on Canyon Creek.
So, would it be against, I, for lack of better words, against the policies to put something like, just some brick at the bottom here that matches that sign?
No, the, the base of it, you know, where that white portion is, we could certainly look at something like that.
And that's what you were asking for, Dave, something like that?
I think, given where we are, and particularly given the permits that you've already issued for the other signs.
Right.
And I, in fact, ran that by the folks at Woodbury, they feel like that's, that's something.
That's plenty.
To say, hey, you know, we're, we're part of the neighborhood.
Is Woodbury asking for any of their...
Some kind of, not that, I mean, yeah.
What would you say? Company name or anything on the signs?
No, not at all.
Nothing?
Just wanting, just something to tie in.
For example...
Canyon Creek logo?
Wanted to, to maybe do that, I think that would probably enhance kind of what we're trying to do that much further, but simply taking this exact rock and adding it to the base. And let me put it this way, I agree with everything that this gentleman just described in terms of what we've come to expect to hear from corporations that have particular brands that they're very concerned about respecting, and the need to have signage for a healthcare facility like this that removes any question about where to go, what it is, and all that type of a thing. So, we're entirely on board with that, but yet trying to simply, in an easy way, make a connection to everything else that's going on. This isn't the first conversation, I think I might have mentioned that earlier, where we've had a similar conversation with, and in that case, it was a national retailer, they had to modify their sign to conform to the standards, and we understand, at least a little bit about the decision-making process, the process that goes into it on their side, but to specifically answer your question, yeah, I think adding rock at the base, if they were to add the Canyon Creek logo, which I think we could probably talk the logo, or sorry, talk to the Woodbury folks into helping with, that would be a bonus, but that's the conversation that I had with the people at Woodbury, that had just been through the process a month ago on their part of the signage package, so, anyway, that's...
So, what's IHC's policy, I guess, when it comes to putting other logos or whatever on, on signage, is that, is that even an option from your point of view?
I, I think we would be hesitant to it. We, we don't want to mix, have mixed signals on the brand side of it, but certainly it's something we could look at and take through our, our branding.
What's your timeline to do something like that?
It would be long.
So, you, this sign, this sign needs to go up sooner than what that would probably take to...
Yeah, I think with what's been indicated, you know, we're, we're excited to open to the public, coming April 5th, right, which is just over a month away, 33 days away, I believe, and, and to be able to have the sign up and, and ready to go, and time for that would be paramount for us.
So, would it be a faster process to be able to just do the rock there, than the stone?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, that wouldn't be an issue, it's just the other...
Yes, it's a, a simulation of other logos and brands that, that come...
What is, what is the possibility that we move forward with the sign, with the brick, not adding logos until you've gone through a process with IHC to see if that's possible, and try and get it added later, or are we wanting that, do we want that to happen before anything even goes up?
What other logos are we...
The, the can...
But in, in the long run, I think that's a reach, for the very reason that you described, they have their brand and so forth, but the rock that's readily available, it's like a stick-on kind of material, it'd be pretty easy, based on what we understand that other people had to do in the past, to add to the base, and like I said, I think that's all that we've been looking for at this point in time.
Okay.
Great.
While you're here, this, this sign, at least the one we're talking about, is on your property, is on IHC's property, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And we had talked in a prior meeting of some possible other locations for signage that would not be on your property.
Yes.
How do you guys handle that? What, what's the process you go through for that?
So, the sign you see here that's titled M9, there are a few other signs that are located on the perimeter of the Canyon Creek development, right? So, one of these signs is proposed at 1600... on the perimeter of the Canyon Creek development, right? So one of these signs is proposed at 1600 South and Canyon Creek Parkway. So that would be one of the locations of the sign. So it's just kind of an indicator out there. We worked through a leasing development on that. So we leased the space on the sign through Canyon Creek. And then we do have a second one that's located at State Street or SR 51 and Spanish Fork Parkway.
So obviously, what we're looking at here has got the Spanish Fork signage there, Canyon Creek. Are we talking tonight about just the sign that's going up on the hospital? Or we're not talking about any of these others?
So this gives us a green light. Issue a permit for assignments as columns wide as what they're.
Okay.
Is this a?
Yeah.
Any other questions for?
I think it's great.
Any other, anything additional you want to add?
You know, I guess the only thing I would add at the end is, you know, just say thank you for your consideration. You know, this is, we're excited to be a community partner in Spanish Fork. And we believe, and hope you believe also, that this hospital is a major tenant to this development as well as this community down here. And we look forward to long-lasting relationships with Spanish Fork.
Yeah, it definitely is.
We're excited.
Everyone's excited. I think we're all a little disappointed when we had to push it back a few months, but looking forward to April.
We are too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve or to recommend Canyon Creek Intermountain Hospital project signage plan amended with the tie-in to the rock of Canyon Creek.
Got a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just looking for thoughts for a couple of things, and then I'll go back really briefly on some potential zoning changes that we talked about in your work session as well. For just a quick reference, the zone changes that we looked at are over here. So this is 3400 East right here-ish. There are a couple of parcels between the subject property that we're looking at here and 3400 East. Remember the Baum family? Mrs. Baum lives on one of those properties, I think, right here, the other zone by Rocky Mountain Power. And I'm gonna go ahead and stick my neck out here and explain that part of the reason that these folks are here tonight, this proposal, is my suggestion that, other than just proceeding under the existing zoning that they have, which is R115, and this property was annexed here within the last couple of months, the city council assigned R115 zoning to it. And I've understood for quite a while that they would like to get some higher density than just that. I suggested something that I think is somewhat reflected here, not entirely necessarily. Not that I think anybody's trying to take any liberties or that sort of a thing, but that potentially you could make a case that in proximity to this intersection here, and particularly given, you know, kind of how this is configured, as really one of two entrances that they'll have to the property, you may be able to make a case for a different zone down here than what you have for the rest of the property. And I think that's why we're here tonight, is to discuss that part of the concept. If the commission simply wants to see the property developed in the R115 zone, then in my opinion, that's something pretty simple to share with us. But I think you could make some kind of a case for some type of different zoning down in this particular area here, or not. And that, I think, is entirely up to the planning commission.
My question on that, Dave, is eventually, eventually this will develop. So are we then, at that point, gonna say, okay, we've allowed for a little higher right here and a little higher right here? Doesn't it also now make sense to?
Totally.
Bring that in? I mean, where, where do you, and obviously, I ask the question is, where do you determine that?
And this is how, this is the train tracks, Highway 6 right here?
And maybe just to throw out a couple of things as food for thought on that. And can you pull back just a little bit more? Let me use another part of the community as an example. Let's go general plan. And again, I'm just throwing out ideas. I also understand that your direction in the past has been pretty clear. I'm not trying to push that at all. So, but perhaps, you know, like we've done around this intersection here, where we've said, hey, you know, we don't know exactly what the configuration might be for some type of development here that's not 15,000 square foot lots, or over here it's not 12,000 square foot lots. We might do something similar down here. Again, kind of a broad brush indication that, in this case, I would suggest that it's because of its proximity to an intersection like this, which is prominent and significant, that that may warrant some other consideration relative to land use than what we have everywhere else in the area. And the concept plan that they've presented, if that's something that you'd like to pursue, I'd probably suggest that we start by amending the general plan in some way to indicate, you know, maybe some kind of linear change of density along the tracks. That certainly is an option. But I agree that it probably wouldn't make sense, just looking at, you know, from 5,000 feet up at, at the land use kind of configuration, to just follow that property line.
One question I have a little, maybe, maybe if the applicants or the proposals are here. Ms. Baum here, like if we do certain things with the property, maybe limits what she can do. Same with, I know Mr. Stewart was here earlier, and his trust is, I think it comes up to this line, if I remember correctly. And you have the Olsons and the New Haven. Also, what kind of conversations have been had with those folks? Because it could potentially limit what they can do with their property.
First of all, Peter Matson with Ovation Homes. Thank you for your time this evening. It's been a long night. And.
This is kind of normal for us.
Yeah.
So you're Peter Matson?
Yes, yeah. So along those lines, as far as direct conversations, I don't know if Rob has had any with the neighboring property owners. I believe he has. But if you go back to that concept plan, from what I understand, we're also looking at likely the need for another substrate here, I mean, up here, you know, even perhaps. So connecting to the surrounding properties meeting all the city standards for that is something that we're totally prepared to deal with.
And these houses, are they, what are, what's the concept? Obviously, we're just in concept phase, but what are the size of these currently?
They're 15,000 minimum. So when you hit some of the corners and the cul-de-sacs, you know, you'll get larger lots than the 15,000. But I think, I don't know, did that other file come through that I sent?
It's the next one.
This kind of gives a breakdown. So the entire site is just under 44 acres. The R15, the larger lots, that would be 61 lots. And then the townhomes along the highway would, would take up 14 acres and end up being, you know, we're estimating 125. It could change just depending on, you know, the buildings and your setbacks and all of that stuff as we go through site.
Forgive first day guy. This is my first day. The, so we're talking R3 here, R15 here, or R15, sorry. The concern that was brought up when, from the filled stone, was, is that enough buffer? From a city staff perspective, is that enough buffer? Or should we be doing something different there? Should we be doing R3 to R8, or whatever that may be?
I think, this is just my opinion, and I certainly respect Mr. Matson's as well. Generally speaking, if you look at our general plan, we don't have that, quite that rapid of a change from one density to the next. However, if you look at certain neighborhoods we have in town, we do have that very thing, or maybe they're not 15,000 square foot lots, but they're, let's say, 13, right next to townhomes. And I think those neighborhoods have aged really well. So I don't think there's a problem with that, per se. In this case, and I, I guess sometimes I do sound like a cheerleader. I try not to. But here, I can make an argument for that, largely because I've heard repeatedly that it's a priority to keep as much of this as 15,000 square foot lots as can be. So rather than to do maybe a more significant transition, making it more abrupt here, I think does that, or at least it potentially could, right? It could, it could simply allow for more single-family homes on bigger lots in the rest of the area. But we could probably look at other areas. I mean, this might be a good one, where here, we had anticipated a pretty intense land use right here. So this may be more intense even than townhomes. But then transitions down from that intensity to dense residential density to a less dense residential density and so forth. I mean, to your point, I think. And actually, the Benjamin interchange is probably the best example of that. But out there, we're talking about, you know, a much bigger area and so forth. So does that make any sense?
Yeah. And that's kind of where my mind was going, is this Benjamin area, because it's very layered in the approach.
With this, we don't expect zoning lines actually to follow this region.
Right.
But it's the concept of having that stepped land use intensity as you go farther from the interchange, so.
So my only concern is we've had a property owner that, for quite a while now, has been pushing and fighting and asking multiple, multiple times to get, to get theirs changed to a higher density. They wanted to be the buffer between R115 and, and everything else. We knew this was going to be high density. They wanted to move more to a medium density. And we basically flat out said no for quite a while. And that's, that's what it turned into. So now they're finally, they've finally given into that. And so my only concern.
And tonight, he came up and totally tried to chew us out about it.
So my only concern is.
Tried to chew you.
He, yeah.
He chewed you out. I dodged it.
I was a deer in the headlights. I didn't.
You did a good job.
Anyways, but.
Set of precedents of sorts, I think is what you're saying.
Yes, we have. And so my concern is what, how does, how does that look? You know, down here on the corner, yeah, I agree. I'm not concerned about that. But, but here along the highway, along the railroad tracks, and even up into here, to say, well, it's because it's along the railroad tracks, or it's because it's along the highway. Well, so is their property. They've got a piece of it that's also along the railroad tracks. And so how is it that we tell these guys, no, you can't do it after months and months and months have come before us, begging almost for us to, to change that for them, and not doing that? And then, within a matter of months, we, on the property right across the street, say, yeah, it's okay for you guys to do it. That.
Can I share a thought?
Yeah.
Please. We've appreciated the conversations we've had with these folks going back a long time now. It took five or six months, maybe to get the animation through. I started talking about this, I'm sure it was last summer. And I really believe that we've been as direct and candid as we could have been from day one about the idea that the city's serious about this being 15,000 square foot lots. And yet, I appreciate your willingness to hear people out on something that's different than that. And I wanted to just emphasize that I think we've been really clear about what they should expect. And I also want to be really clear that I appreciate your observation, and I think that can't be underscored. I think that is something that you absolutely should take very seriously. I'd just maybe leave it at that.
So, and just to underline that, I think, I actually don't have a problem with this being a higher density area too, across that line. But I, the, the city has a limited number of these larger lots. And, and even farther up north here, there, there is building going along where there's the highway and the, and the railroad tracks behind them too. And they're selling like that. And so you can make a case for, oh, right by the highway and the railroad tracks, we could go higher density. But that's not what we have done. And, and so my thought is just to keep that, the R115. I mean, we have people that are saying to us, or at least me as a commissioner, saying, why don't we have more half-acre and one-acre lots here in Spanish Fork? So, so they'll sell. I can, I can see, and honestly, it could make a nice community to have a mixture of, of people in different sized lots in a, in a little, in a neighborhood. But that's what we've said. We've really, we've really come out strongly.
So again, because of what we've done here, the precedent we've set there, knowing that there's going to be a couple of roads coming out here, I don't know that it would be a concern of mine for whatever the adjacent road is, the road across the street that comes into this neighborhood. I assume it's going to be south of the Baum property, because they're not doing anything with theirs at this point. I wouldn't have a concern with everything south of this road being a higher density, because it's on the corner and it's next to the highway. It's just, just the location. It matches exactly what's across the street from it. Anything else in the development, I would, I would hesitate with that.
Can I give you a little background on our thought process? And I wouldn't keep you much longer, but, which, yeah, this is fine. We've looked at, I think I probably have, you know, five or six different concept plans that we've gone through after talking with staff, understanding the planning commission and the council's concerns. I mean, when we first look at a 40-acre piece, you know, we build several different housing types.